Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission of January 22nd, I'm sorry, 26, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And the Planning Commission begins. Okay, so on March 4, 2020, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. So as March 17, 2020, Governor Newsom issued an executive order in 2920 suspending certain requirement of the Brown Act relating to the conduct of public meetings. Pursued to the executive orders, planning commissions may attend meeting commission plannings by phone or by, it's not required, to make available a physical location from which member of the public may observe the meeting and offer public comments. On June 18, 2020, the California Department of Public Health issued guidance mandating that people in California wear cloth masks covering in specific circumstances, including when they are inside or in line to enter any indoor public spaces. So I see that all of us are wearing masks. Due to ongoing COVID-19 emergency in pursuit to state and county public health directives, the city council chambers will have limited seating available on a first-come, first-served basis for members of the public to attend and participate in the city council meeting in person. All persons attending the meetings are required to wear cloth, face covering, and observe social distancing protocols. Member of the public may also watch city council and planning commission meeting live on the city website. And it has www.westcavina.org. Under the Watch Live tab or through the West Covina YouTube. If you experience symptoms such as fever, chills, cough, shortness of breath, or difficulty breathing, fatigue, or sore throat, the city requests that you participate in the meeting from home by watching the meeting live via the link set forth above. Remote public participation in lieu of attending the meeting in person, members of the public can submit public comments via email or address the public commission by telephone using the method described below. So you can email to us before 5:00 on the Planning Commission, 5:00 PM. And by telephone accessibility, members of the public that wishes to address the commission by telephone during oral communication or a public hearing may contact the city clerk by email, city underscore clerk@westcavina.org, or by telephone, which is 939-8433 by 5:30 PM on the day of the commission meeting for the instructions regarding addressing the planning commission. And then we have public comment addressing the commission. Any person wishing to address the planning commission on any matter listed on the agenda or on any other matter within their jurisdictions to ask to complete a speaker card, which is pink or yellow card, so it's on the podium right there. And please identify on the speaker card whether you are speaking on an agenda item or non-agenda item. Request to speak on our non-agenda items will be heard during oral communications before the public hearing sections of the agenda. Oral communications are limited to 30 minutes. Generally, comments are limited to five minutes per speaker unless further time is granted by the chairperson. Chairperson may also at his or her discretion further limit the time of each speaker in order to accommodate a huge number of speakers and/or to ensure that the businesses of the planning commission is effectively conducted. Any testimony or comments regarding a matter set for the public hearing will be heard during the public hearing for that item. I'd like to welcome all the residents, staff, applicants, our city staff, and also we have four new planning commissioners. Tonight, we're gonna do, we're gonna have a moment of silent prayer and meditation and Livia Becerra is gonna help me with the pledge allegiance. And then we're gonna sworn in all the new commissioners. And then we have a roll call after that. So can you please join me for a moment of silent prayer and pledge allegiance? And Livia, can you help me with the pledge, please?
Do you swear? Financially, into the power of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, good and good to you.
Thank you. Give us a second, and Paulina will be swearing in, our new commissioners.
Sorry, yes, we will start with Ms. Becerra.
Aye.
Aye, Livia Becerra.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon, I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter. Thank you. Go ahead. Oh, thank you.
Can you have Commissioner Gutierrez come to the front?
You saw. Solemnly swear. That I will defend. I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California, against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
The Constitution of the State of California. This obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
If you can sign here for me?
Okay, great.
Thank you. Congratulations. Commissioner Lewis?
Aye, Nicholas Lewis.
Aye, Nicholas Scott Lewis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution. Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Got you.
Commissioner Williams? Okay. I shall be Renee Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend. That I will support and defend. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. I will bear true faith and allegiance. The Constitution of the United States. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. This obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully. I will well and faithfully discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you all, congratulations. Thank you. I'd like to take this moment to congratulate all four new appointed planning commissioners. So, thank you. It's a great opportunity that we can hopefully work together for the next four years or so, that we're gonna make decisions not only based on each individual resident sometime we're dealing with tonight. We have huge hospitals that we have not made any decisions or haven't had a new hospital since 1960 something, 62, I believe. So it's a great opportunities to also make plan looking toward the past, also at the present of what we're looking, you know, what our needs are, and then also to protect us and to help us how our future, the city of West Covina and its residents, reflecting everyone involved in our city. So I'm looking forward to doing that. And also I'm gonna take a little bit of a moment for our commissioners, our brand-new commissioners, to introduce themselves. So we have tonight Councilman Dario Castellanos, commissioners had appointed Nick Lewis, and then Mayor Leti Lopez, commissioners appointed by Brian Gutierrez. And then we also have Councilman Rosario Diaz, her commission appointed is Livia Becerra. And then Councilman Brian Tabat Tabai is our brand-new commissioners is Shelby Williams. So if you could take a moment and we can start with Livia Becerra to the top, let us know. What about yourself?
Hi, I'm a longtime resident of West Covina. So hard to talk with this thing. My parents moved here in 1970, and I was just five years old. I attended Merced Elementary, Cameron Junior High, which we were the last class to graduate before it was converted to an elementary. And then I attended West Covina High School and graduated as a Spartan in 1983. As a young adult, I moved away and returned in 1998 to care for my elderly parents. And I have two wonderful children, Antonio, 22, Eva, she's 15, and they've attended Jubilee Christian and West Covina High School, so, you know, they've gone through our district as well. My background is in real estate and mortgage, and this year marks 20 years that I have in this industry. All that being said, I know a bit about the history of our city, and I welcome this opportunity as a volunteer position and look forward to serving our community.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicholas Lewis. I'm sure some of you know me as the elected city clerk of the city of West Covina since 2013. I've also served for about 11 years prior to this as a community and senior services commissioner. In addition, this city is my hometown. I grew up here. My family is three generations strong in this city. So, you know, coming here and helping to forge the direction of the city is certainly an honor and something I certainly don't take lightly, given my roots in this city. And again, I certainly look forward to doing this. By way of background, I am an attorney. I manage a law firm in San Dimas, California. And again, I think I know a good deal of the people in this room and look forward to seeing you all and working with everyone on this commission moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Shelby Williams?
You are using, yeah?
Thank you. And then we have our last commissioner, Brian Gutierrez.
Yes, and well, thank you so much, and thank you to everyone who's here today and those who are online listening as well. And I am, it's an extreme honor to be appointed by Mayor Lopez Viado to the Planning Commission, and it'll be my commitment to always work in the best interests of our residents going forward. At the end of the day, the residents are our voices in our community, and their beliefs are what counts in the people's building. And just to tell you a little bit about my background, I grew up in West Covina. I lived here since I was a child. I went to Nogales High School. I grew up in the foster care system while also having autism as biggers. And despite those struggles, I am currently the Executive Vice President of External Affairs with a major record label with Sony Music and with Dell Records. And I have a business background, and my commitment to the community will always be important to me, and I will always work for the people of West Covina. And once again, thank you to Mayor Leti Lopez Viado for her commitment and her dedication, her passion for all she has done for our community in the last couple of years in putting the community first. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much. And last but not least, I just want to introduce myself since everyone's into, so whoever's watching from home also know a little bit about my background. I'm being appointed by Tony Vu, and I lived here, you know, all my life pretty much in Southern California. However, as a young adult, I moved here since the night 2000, I believe, in 2000. So it's been a long time, and I serve as a planning commissioner for five years now, I believe. And I'd like to take this opportunity that each one of us, we have in West Covina is over 110,000 residents that lives here. That mean each one of us represents approximately 20,000, 22,000 or so of residents. So every decisions that we make, hopefully we keep that in mind, that we're not only affecting our individual needs in months, but we also thinking about all the residents that live in West Covina, and we're serving under city councils who appointed us. I really appreciate it, and I'd like to take this time to thank Councilman Tony Vu who appointed me. I haven't forgotten about him, but lots of things I need to do. I wasn't expecting that we're having brand-new four commissioners, but that is very exciting and looking forward to work with everyone. Paulina, can you please roll call?
Good evening, and welcome onboard to our new commissioners. Commissioner Becerra? Commissioner Gutierrez?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Chair Hang?
Here.
We're gonna move on to the approval of minutes, and does anyone have any changes to the minutes of December 8, 2020?
I do have a procedural question, actually. Given the fact that we have four new commissioners here, generally speaking, commissioners tend to abstain from approval of the minutes when they were not part of the meeting. What is the pleasure of staff at this juncture, since we only have one commissioner who was here at the previous meeting?
I'll let our city attorney respond to that. Ivy? Sorry, we're trying to unmute her. I think at this time, because we do have four new commissioners, we would, you know, we do need approval on the minute, so we would request if you could approve it, so we can get approval on them on the record. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and second.
Okay, so the minute of December 8, 2020, approved as submitted. So Pauline, do you need to do a roll call?
Unless you'd like me to, I can do that. Commissioner Becerra? Oh, sorry, we're voting on approval of the minutes for the December 8, 2020 Planning Commission.
Thank you, Joan. Can everybody hear me?
Okay, there's our city.
There's our city attorney.
We can.
Okay, great. So there's no need for new, there's no need for the commissioners to abstain from the minutes if they've been able to review the prior meeting?
So we can go back to roll call. Commissioner Becerra? Yay, yeah. Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams? Chair Hang?
Aye.
We're moving on to oral communications now. This is the time when any member of the public may speak to the commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included on the agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. For all oral communications that your person may impose, reasonable limitations on public comments to assure an orderly and timely meeting. The Rough Brown Act limits the planning commission and staff's ability to respond to public comments at this meeting. Those your comment may be agendized for a future meeting or referred to staff. The commission may ask questions for clarification if desired at this time. By policy of the commission, oral communication at this time on the agenda is limited to a total of 15 minutes. Person who are not afforded the opportunity to speak at this time may do so continuation of oral communication later on the agenda. Would anyone like to speak to the commissioners on any item that is not on tonight's agenda?
If I could ask for anyone interested in speaking to provide me their speaker card?
Oh. Okay, if I, so if no one's coming for oral communication, so we move on to public hearing. Okay, this, which is the conditional use permit number 2007, this matter was continued for the November 24, 2020 regular meeting. Joanne Burns will present the staff meeting. So it's a slight modification number 20-01, Subcommittee for Design Review number 20-2. Actually, this is a applicant is Gerardo Namon, and location is 1208 South Holland Coast Drive. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for the construction of an 1868 square foot second-story addition, a 734 square foot single-story addition, 952 square foot three-car garage to replace the existing two-car garage, and a 520 square foot balcony to the existing 4,344 square foot second-story single-family residence. The proposed house will have a total floor area of 7,465 square foot, exceeding the 5,000 square foot maximum unit size. The applicant is also requesting a slight modification to exceed the 25-foot building height by two feet. And who will be doing the presentations? Joanne will be?
Joanne will be providing the presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and also members of the public. Just before I give my presentation, just for the record, since this is a continued item, which was initially continued from the November 10, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, to the December, the first meeting, the first Planning Commission meeting in December, and then was continued to this, to a date uncertain, and was re-noticed to today's meeting. And the staff report from the November 10 Planning Commission meeting has been, was attached and was provided to the Planning Commission with their agenda packet and has been reviewed by all the planning commissioners. In addition to that, the minutes that was just approved by the Planning Commission today was, one of the minutes was for the November 10 Planning Commission meeting. I'm not going to go over the project in detail as it was, it was gone over in detail at the November 10 Planning Commission meeting, but I will brush up on some of the basics. So just, that's just for the record. Okay, I'll go ahead and begin the presentation. Just as the chair mentioned, the application is for a conditional use permit to exceed the 25-foot threshold for the maximum unit size. For this particular property, the maximum unit size for lots over 20,000 square feet, for this particular area is 5,000 square feet. The project is proposing a total of 7,465 square feet, and this total includes the garage. The slight modification is requested because the maximum height for homes is 25 feet in the project. The existing house is currently at approximately 27 feet. So the applicant would like to meet the height of the existing house for the addition so that it's consistent. So they are asking for a two-feet height, extra height, to comply or to meet the 27-foot height of the existing house. The project requires a Subcommittee for Design Review because it's visible from the public right-of-way. So for the record, here is the existing site plan. Note that the existing garage is highlighted in yellow, and that garage is proposed to be demolished as part of the project because the project would require a three-car garage since.
You are unmuted.
Since the project would require a three-car garage since they, the overall floor plan or proposed floor plan would have more than four bedrooms. Here is the proposed site plan. The proposed, the existing house is. The, the proposed, the existing house is, it, a portion of, of the existing house is highlighted of the first floor is highlighted in addition, the existing house in the proposed addition in the first floor is highlighted in blue. The second, the second floor with addition right along, right along here with existing two story is highlighted in purple while a portion of the proposed garage is highlighted in yellow in the site plan. The project does comply with all required setbacks in that pertains to area district three. At the November 10th Planning Commission meeting, the item was continued for, for two, basically two reasons. One was the planning commission provided the applicant direction to install story poles on site to get a basic idea on the massing that the proposed addition and proposed house would contribute to the overall site. And two was also, was so that the applicant could also have time to prepare a line of sight view or plan for the, for the proposed addition as, as it relates to the neighbor, the neighboring property located on the east side, which on, on the aerial in the project, projected on, on the presentation or the PowerPoint presentation. This is the, the subject property and the line of sight would be from the east side neighbor right along here. So. I've, I've taken pictures from, from the site, from the general vicinity of the project site. The, the first photograph on the top right, right along here shows the story poles approximately in this area. And this photograph was taken on the street from, from where I am pointing at the arrow right along here on, on Casa Grande Drive. So I took the picture standing on, in the middle of the street forward. So it's, it is, it is visible. It's a two story house on a hill, on hillside. So it is visible. This, the photograph at the bottom is taken from across the subjects, oh, across the subject site near the suburban water in front of the suburban water company, right along this area right here where the arrow is pointing. Took the picture forward towards the house and the story poles can be seen right along there. And this photograph was taken right in front, on this, on Holland Crest Drive, right in front of the driveway with a, a car or a pedestrian was walking across right along here or, or a car was driving. This is what, the story poles up here is what they would see. These, these, the story poles on the projector now, this, the photograph on the top was taken from the neighbor's driveway looking towards the subject site. You can see the story poles right along here. And the bottom photograph is it is towards the, this is the neighbor, the neighbor's house, towards the neighbor's property that shows that where their predominant view shed is, which is north. North of the property down, down the hill right, pointing towards this area. So we, there is some, some, uh, some, uh, some view blockage there from the neighbor's driveway. However, there, there, the city does not have any view protection ordinance and the fact that this, this particular view from the driveway would not totally prevent the neighbor from enjoying their property. And there is no privacy impacts from directly, directly towards or to or from any of the surrounding neighbors along or adjacent to the site. Staff is recommending approval of the project. One of the items that came up during staff, staff's review is the roof design, which is option one that was presented was a Dutch gable and option two is just a regular gable. The existing house does have a Dutch gable. So staff is recommending that the applicant go with option one so that it is more consistent with the roof design of the existing house. So here are some renderings comparing the difference between the Dutch gable and the gable roof. The applicant, however, does prepare that, that the planning commission go with option two. I just wanted to point that out. Here is the front elevation for, for the proposed house with the, with the Dutch gable. Again, as proposed, the maximum height of the house would be 27 feet and it's to match the existing house. There is a condition of approval written in the resolution that requires the applicant to provide a height survey of the existing house prior to building permit issuance and also a height survey prior to frame, to build, to the building and safety framing inspection of the, the proposed or the, the new, the new construction. So in the new construction cannot be, cannot be taller than 27 feet or the height of the existing house, whichever is less. And that is what the, one of the conditions in the resolution states. Here is a side elevation facing Holland Crest. The other side elevation. And I just wanted to point out that the deck highlighted in yellow is existing and the deck in purple is proposed. The rear, the rear elevation. And here is the rendering of the rear elevation. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project with the design option one. The applicant is, I didn't go over the line of sight details because the applicant is here with his own presentation and will present the planning commission with their line of sight detail. This concludes staff presentation. If the planning commission has any questions, I'll be, I'll, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Joanne. Does commissioners have any questions for our staff? If not, um, go ahead.
With regard to the, the roof proposal, was the applicant seeking option two or option one?
Staff is recommending option one and the applicant is seeking option two.
Uh, what, what option, what, so the applicant currently has option one on the house?
The, the existing house has a Dutch gable feature, like it, looking at the, looking at the projector right, if you look at this rough plane right here, there is a Dutch gable there and then it would match the Dutch gable. This, the second floor addition will match, match the Dutch gable. That's in, that's part of the existing house.
And so.
So.
Two, the only thing that's really changing is just that one.
Yes, yes. And the applicant prepares option two, I believe, because of financial, the cost. In aesthetics, the, the property owner prefers the look of option two better.
Okay, great.
Can I ask, is there a, a difference in the height of the roof at that point? Is that where there was an additional two feet or is it, is it the same at that point?
According, according to the applicant, the height of the, the existing roof is 27 feet. Um, and the maximum height it, for residential in the city is 25 feet from lowest grade to the highest point on the top, on top of the roof ridge. So in order for them to match the height of the existing house, they would have to have a, the second story addition would have to be also 27 feet.
Joanne, can you show them the existing roof that they have currently and where the add-ons are? So years ago, they built their home with an existing roof of a second story is 27 feet. But in today's all code, our city code, the maximum height is 25 feet. So Joanne's gonna show us where the existing house right now is.
I believe this is on the elevation and this is the existing house and this is the portion that they're adding on. So they're trying to match the height of their existing house. And we, and we are going to be, if that, the planning commission approves a project, we, this, per the condition of approval, staff is gonna be verifying the height of the existing house and also the height of the proposed addition, existing house prior to building permit issuance and the height of the addition prior, prior to frame, the framing inspection. So, so that once they're done with framing, they can verify the height of the existing house prior to get the inspector signing off on it so that if there are any changes or they have to lower it, they would have the opportunity to do so right then. Before, before the house is completed.
Thank you. And if us, our commissioners do not have any more questions, which you can also ask later, I'm gonna open up to public hearing. So we're gonna hear from the applicants and then we're gonna hear from the opposing side and then we're gonna hear from applicant again and then our commissions can have more questions we can ask. Can you please fill out a card for us as well? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, commissioners. Welcome. It's gonna be exciting. So we presented this project, the last planning commission meeting and we, and it was staff's recommendation to continue it to today. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the project because I know most of the commissioners are new and I just wanna let you know how we feel about the project, how we became to this design and also what our client's vision is. So our clients have lived here. This is their forever home. So they came to us to design their dream home. Their dream home would consist in views. This, this property is very unique. It has a 270 view. It could see the mountains. It can see the beach and it could see part of the OC. Our design was completely to, to accommodate those views and to take full advantage because there is a pool and their family is growing. Currently, the, the property owner lives there with their, with their parents. So their dream home is to continue living with their parents and to have kids. So this is their dream home. The existing house is 3,900, approximately 3,900 square feet and the proposal is to be 7,465 square feet. 3,910 square feet might sound, might sound like a large house, but the way it was built and the way it is designed does not look like a 3,900 square foot house when you walk into it. There's a varying ranges of grade change. There's also steps going down, steps going up. One portion is one story of the house. The other portion is two stories of the house. So there's variations of heights within the house that doesn't allow it to be the full potential of like a brand new house that we construct today that we've constructed. That's 3,900 square feet. 3,900 square feet is, is a large house if it was designed today. But that's not the case in this property. Like I said, the design was driven by views. A little bit more about the commission meeting was that on November 10th, when the, when the project was presented to the commission, there was the neighbor. He had a concern about his views. Because he had a concern, we, as the designer and also my client, we said, well, we would like to assure you that your view will not be blocked. I'm sorry, I was talking. I wasn't expecting that. Can you go back to the first, the very first slide? I didn't know the, that was going on. So this is, this is the project. If you click again, this is the area mostly of what the existing house is. And if you click again, and then this is the portion of the interior of the house, not the exterior. So a big majority of the house looks towards a wall and looks towards a difference in grade. So about 2,000 square feet of that house, first story and second story is looking at a wall. So this new project is gonna be taking advantage of the views and I wanted to show that picture because it was very important because most of that square footage is really tucked into the grade change that I'm gonna show next to the next picture. So that is the area 2,000. That's, that's a kind of like the 2,000, the majority of the house is in that area. In the next slide, so we flew a drone because we wanted to have a, a perfect eyesight level of straight of how there's, there is a 17 feet difference in grade from our project site to the neighboring house. Is, that's what you see kind of in the bottom. What you see on the top is an architectural plan of the new project and in relation to how the, the neighboring property will not have his view blocked. Like staff said, the view blocking is not a code that we're, it's not a code that we are not meeting. Our project is meeting all of the code, the municipal code, and this is something that the neighbor has this concern. We produced this drawing. If you see the red line, you click again, please. You click again. So that was, there's a red line and that is the neighbor's line of sight. If he is at his house in the second story, looking out to his view, there is no view that would be blocked from our project. Okay, also, our project is continuing the existing house height. We are not going higher and we are not going lower. We could go lower, but the house would not look as good. And because this is a dream home, we want the best and we also wanna design the best. With that said, if you go to the next, I think, is that, yeah, that's it. So I just wanna talk a little bit more about this project because if you look at the bottom, the second story, that is our, our, our height. And then if you see at the top, that is the brand new addition. So that day after that the meeting took place, I, I approached the, the neighbor and I asked him, what, what is your concern? And I said, because I would really like to go to your property and I really like the city staff to go to the property and to be able to show you in person, just like I did, to show me how your view is blocked. I understand he probably doesn't design houses for a living. This is my job. This is what I do for a living. It's my passion. And I could, I could guarantee you and I could have surveyors go out there and guarantee that from his second story house, if he's standing there, our project will be the same. And that's, and that's the reason why we flew that drone there. So you can have a clear line sight because from the street, if you're driving up, I don't know if anyone's, if you guys have visited the site, but it's a very unique site. It's up on a hill and the street curves around. So from the very bottom of that street to the top of the property is about 50 feet. As you gradually come up, it's 30 feet. And then when you go to the entrance, you still have to go another 30 feet in elevation and grade. So there's, there's a very large grade change on this property. In addition, we do not have neighbors to the left. We do not have neighbors in front of us. We do have neighbors to the right a little, but there's a difference grade change there too. So this site is very unique. With that said, we spoke to the property owner and we, we expressed our concern. We said, well, if you have a concern with this property, please give us the opportunity to visit your site and we can describe to you how this project would work. And that's how we came up with the poll plan. Okay, so we produced, we produced a poll plan. And did anyone see the poll plan there? Okay, that poll plan is actually, shows the house. That poll plan is actually, shows the house complete height as a box. It doesn't show the roof like this. So what you saw was a huge box. Even though on the cornered areas, there is no, how can I describe it? So this is the box, right? So the poll plan that you saw was a box. What you should have saw was something like this. Right? Which is completely different, because it wouldn't look as large. So the poll plan was a little deceiving, the way it was designed. But I just wanted to clarify that for you. Because when I saw it, I thought the same thing. I said, "Wait a minute. This isn't what we designed." So, I hope that was a good illustration of the line of sight. And also the plans that he have received. In addition, great change. And in addition, when I spoke to the owner and I let him know, "Hey, we would like to go on the property with you," his concern was the line of sight. And there's also, there's another concern from his wife, was that the property value would go down. I don't believe that any of this type of project of this magnitude would allow an adjacent property or any property nearby for the property values to go down. So that's just my opinion. And I'm sure that would be something very general. In addition, staff also did recommend, recommended for approval on the previous planning commission meeting. And they are also recommending approval in this meeting. Our code, our project meets the West Covina Municipal Code. It's also providing, I believe, a great high-end project. It's not a project that we're cutting corners. It's not a project that we want to just do as quick as possible. This project has been taking almost a year just to get to where it's at now. Also, we would like the gable design, because it's more of a modern design. Our project's a little lean toward modern. We are open, because we would just like to get our project going. And if you believe that a Dutch hip roof will look better, then we are also open to that, as long as we receive approval. And also, lastly, we agree with staff that we do not exceed any height. We're not trying to go higher. We're just trying to be consistent and have a uniform house. And also, we're meeting the code. With that said, we take pride in our work. We do a lot of houses nearby. And this would just be another house that we would love to do. And we'd like to see the end result to be produced exactly like the rendering. And I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that'd like to speak for the project? Okay. Sure.
Can you explain a little bit about why the homeowner prefers option two and the more modern look? And go a little bit into about the, having a more modern look may bring actually increased home values? Because if a property, just say your homeowner wants to sell that house one day, and it's a modern look, and that house sells for X amount of money, then that means that the next sale next door, or the store next door over there, might sell for more now, because of that modern and more being able to resell that product. But in general, if you could go into a little bit about why they have strong beliefs in having that modern look.
Okay. I believe it's all personal preference. I like modern, but I also like Spanish. So if I was going to build a house, I would build Spanish. So the client's desires and their wishes of their dream home, is that what you see up there? And really, the gable roof is something that they like. It goes with both styles' work. But you know, if I'm building a dream house for someone, I would love to have their opinion on how they want their dream house to look like. I'll design it, but they're going to live in it. So that's why we would like to have the gable design. Like we said, we know this is a process. And we're open to anything we have to do to get it approved. Yes.
In regards to your plans that were prepared for the project, I happened to notice on the front elevation and the second side elevation, that the maximum height is called out at 27 feet and 2 inches.
That's correct.
But you're actually agreeing to go with what the staff has recommended, to not exceed 27 feet, correct?
Staff is recommending to reduce the height?
No. What staff indicated was that you were asking for a two-foot increase. So right now, the code normally calls for 25.
Correct.
So for the addition, you're going to maintain that at 27, correct?
Correct. Our goal is to match the house. To make it look at the end, to make it kind of look like it was all designed at one time.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, to that point, I understand why staff is asking for option one, the Dutch gable. Being that the existing house currently has a Dutch gable. And ordinarily, when someone is doing an addition, unless they truly decide they want to make a complete change. What's your thoughts?
My thought is that, when the house was designed, it was designed with the Dutch, the Dutch gable. Since we are redesigning the house, and we are kind of changing the roof, if we could have the option, we would love to have a gable. It's more of the city is requesting this, but the property owner wants this, the designer wants this. So it's kind of like, we're open to both. But if it's our option, and you give us the option, then we would like to have a hip, I mean, I'm sorry, a gable. I'm sorry, did I answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay.
Just a quick question for staff with regard to the Dutch gable versus gable dichotomy. Is there, is there any set level of uniformity in the neighborhood with regard to gable versus Dutch gable or anything along those lines that we have? And I assume, I just want to clarify for the record, that there is nothing in our code that would prevent them from having either a gable or a Dutch gable roof?
That's correct. There isn't anything in our code that would prevent them from having the proposed gable. It's completely up to the planning commission. As far as, as far as the neighborhood is concerned, I believe there are, most of the neighbors have, do have gable roofs. But staff didn't take a survey on whether or not there are Dutch gable roofs present in the area.
I also want to add that the Dutch, I think it was one of the questions or one of the concerns from one of the commissioners was the height of the roofs. If they're different, they're both the same height. It's just a different design.
Thank you. And if commissioners does not have any more questions, we're going to open up to another speaker. Do we have any more speakers for the project? It's for the projects or opposing the project? For the projects? Any other speakers? If you don't have any, I don't have any card for the project. So I'm going to open up to opposing the project. Please come up.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Paul Masalbas. I reside at 1216 Hollencrest Drive. That's the house immediately to the east. And here's my card. I'd like to start off with a comment. The gentleman who spoke immediately before me, he completely misrepresented my presentation that I made at the last meeting, and my concerns. He stated that I'm concerned about the view. And that is absolutely not my concern. And I made that very clear at the last meeting on November 10th. The line of sight drawing that was prepared by the architect was actually, I believe, requested by Commissioner Heng. But to continue with my presentation, this area, of course, is Zoned R1. The house had an addition built in the late 1970s, bringing it to its present size of 4,300 square feet. 4,344. The average home size in 20 homes surrounding the house is 3,300 square feet, existing. The existing house at 1208 Hollencrest, the subject address, is already 31% larger than the average home size in the neighborhood. The proposed home would be twice, more than twice, the size of the surrounding homes in the neighborhood. I requested that the applicant place story polls at the site. They agreed to do so, because I knew that these story polls would really show this monstrosity that's proposed. I asked the city to prepare a slide presentation for me, or I've given them a slide to present, that more clearly shows, I'm not sure how many of you had the opportunity to go see the story polls at the site, but they do depict quite a large structure that's proposed. We'll go quickly through these. First one does show those flags that you can see above the garage. This is down from Casa Grande. Again, you can see the story polls in the sky, depicting the proposed structure, next. And this is from Hollencrest Drive, immediately adjacent to the property. See the story polls in the sky? Show with the arrow where the story polls are, where the flags? Thank you. Next. And here is again from Casa Grande. You can see the structure proposed, the story polls, and the flags, next. And this is from Hollenbeck Street, traveling southbound. And the story polls and flags you can see take the size of the structure that's proposed, next. This is from my driveway, next. This is actually from my home. I think that's the last slide, is that correct, ma'am? Thank you. Required findings for a conditional use permit, it stated that visual scale and massing presented by the addition from off-site views is insignificant due to the topography of the site. The building pad is higher than the street, and the addition would not be readily visible to pedestrians and vehicles passing by. That's what's stated in the report, item number two under the conditional use permit. As you can see by the story polls, that that is absolutely incorrect. One of the conditions or requirements of a conditional use permit is that the structure not appear massive or boxy. I believe those indeed are presented here. Another requirement is that in an area that is predominantly one-story, the addition of a second-story balcony, especially in a flatland neighborhood, can have an effect on privacy. In these areas, balconies and rear yards are discouraged. And it stated that the proposed balcony will have minimal privacy impacts. The balcony on the west side will be overlooking the backyard and the street. Indeed, it actually overlooks the neighbors to the west. And I've spoken with them, and they're quite upset that this will be a structure that they can easily see into their yards. I understand that the maximum unit size is 4,000 square feet in this R1 neighborhood. It's allowable to go 25% over that amount with planning commission approval, unless I'm mistaken. And so, I heard the, the planning group state that the maximum unit size is 5,000. My understanding, it's 4,000 with an allowable 25% overbuild with approval. The purpose of zoning laws is to prevent exactly what is proposed here. This is an extremely large home that's proposed in an area of smaller homes. I've prepared a petition that I'd like to submit of the eight surrounding properties that are indeed opposed to this proposal. As I went home to home, talking to them, many of them complained that they had not received any notification of the development, despite the city stating that they, the planning commission, the planning office stating that they've submitted, or sent it out to 35 surrounding properties. Many other cities in the region have experimented with allowing massive structures adjacent to smaller homes. And I think many of them have decided that that was not the appropriate way to go and have changed their approach. I'll point that out. City of Arcadia comes to mind. This proposed home will simply not fit into the character of our neighborhood. And would indeed have a negative impact on property values due to its extreme size compared to the other homes. My neighbors and I respectfully request that the application be denied. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question for you. So, in the event that this matter is denied, and they decide to move forward with a project that, you know, exceeds the 4,000-square-foot limit, let's say that's approved. Is that something that you think is too large? Or certainly, I'm just trying to understand, what is, what is the limitation in your mind?
Well, the limitation is 5,000 square feet. And if it was proposed to increase the size of the home to 5,000 square feet, I would not be here today. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Do we have any more cards? Come on in.
Hi, good evening. My name is Don Holtz. I live at 1228 Hollencrest, three houses down from the applicant. There seems to be some confusion. When this was presented to us, I was on the planning commission when this was presented to us. Yeah, house was 26, they said it was 26 feet high. And we knew, excuse me, we knew it was one foot over, but we thought, one foot's no big deal. Now we're talking about 27 foot. So I'm not too sure what measurement is correct. But that's not why I'm up here. I'm up here because, just to cut through it, the house is too big for the area. It's just too large. It doesn't fit in with the architecture of the other homes. The average homes in that whole area are 30, 33, 3400 square feet. And they're large homes. And I live in one of them. But it just doesn't fit in the area. And it's just going to look like a, you know, something from Disneyland sitting up on that hill. So after talking to some of my neighbors, they all said it doesn't fit. And when you say there's no homes, he said, the architect said, "There's no homes in front of it." There's no homes in front of it as far as line of sight, but there are homes all around that area. There's no empty lots. So we asked them if they could reduce the size of the homes. And we were willing to work with them. But I see they came back with the same plan. Almost 7,500 square feet. And I think, if I remember, and I don't have the floor plans in front of me, I think they were going to have five to seven bedrooms in that house. And I'm not sure, maybe, do you remember how many bedrooms? Anyway, they were going to have a lot of bedrooms in that house. They don't have a place on that lot for a granny flat. That would be totally different. But to build this monstrosity and have the architecture being modern instead of fitting it with the neighborhood just doesn't make sense. And that's why I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Carlos Gray. I reside directly west, across from the proposed home.
I reside directly west, across from the proposed home. This agenda number came with the few interests as high-standing structures outline the new proposed home, which can be seen from a few blocks away. Is a prominent and distinct structure asking for significant code exemptions? For reference, for additional reference, I live one block east of the proposed home, approximately fifty to a hundred foot below the first floor, the ground level of the first floor. Is going to intrude into our privacy? This may not happen if no significant exceptions are granted. A few concerns are significant percent increase from the possible one-time exception. Not in theme with homes within a one or two-block area. And exceptions for this item, well, in general, just not receiving notification of such a major exception. Just some items that I know didn't, this is my first time hearing about this, besides from my neighbor, which was brought to our attention, again, this is something of concern due to privacy. And also, just the, as mentioned, the one, originally, it's allowable to go twenty-five percent overbuild at where this is being allowed to be about fifty percent. Story polls indicate it with geo-information does not. The three photos presented are taken from the west-facing east directions and does not depict the actual size or impression it makes on the neighborhood. Also, I mean, the story polls are about, I don't know, six inches in diameter or so, and a picture like that, it's really hard to even illustrate Mention was made about line of sight, just a rough calculation with the one-degree shift on a two-axis basis. At approximately one mile away, that's about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand square feet of blockage, which exponentially increases for every mile we consider. I respectfully request the application to be denied. Any questions or?
Do we have any more cards? We'll have the applicant rebut. Go ahead, come on up.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify one thing. The project that was presented to the commission the first time is the same exact project presented to you before the commission today. The only thing different is that I presented the site analysis view. Also, to clarify, on the staff report, the first page, I will read you the sentence. It says, during the public hearing, one neighbor spoke in opposition to the project with concerns pertaining to the size of the proposed house that requested height modification and potential view impacts. So we came to address those concerns, and we would like to openly address them. Like Commissioner Lewis, you said, okay, so what is big? We are here before the commission to request approval to a project that meets code. We are not asking to go, I mean, this property is, there's properties nearby that are ten thousand square feet, that are just up the street. There are other properties that are seven, and there's, I think, another one of six. Staff has produced a survey of houses. I think it was the previous staff report that may be in your agenda that shows the houses that are this size and larger, which are in the same exact area. So like I said, we have submitted something that does meet the code with the approval of the Planning Commission. And also, it is by law that staff produces a notice, a public notice, and is mailed to all property owners within three-hundred-foot radius. So everyone that is within the three-hundred-foot radius received a letter stating that this project is under hearing today, or else that would be against the law. So I believe that staff did that, one-hundred percent, just to clarify. And also, the height is not changing. The majority of the addition, can you please pull up the elevation from the view? That shows, what do you call that, the west elevation? No, the west elevation, the rendering that you have in your presentation? Like I said, in, like I said from the very beginning, our desires of designing this house is to take advantage of this view. When you are up there, there is, you cannot see into people's houses. When you're up there, you see roof. You see everyone's roof. You cannot see people's bathroom. You cannot be seeing inside people's rooms. Most of the properties have large hedges looking down, and also, the majority is just roofs. So we have no desires in designing a house that would be taking advantage or looking over any else's properties. That is not our desire. And also, our desire is to take advantage of the views. If you go to the very last one, that one. To reduce massing, we have a patio on the bottom that is a little bit recessed in. And also, that whole wall is glass. And the glass also continues to, and it wraps around on each side of the building. So that is the focal point. This is our focal point. We would like to, if we clearly showed that the potential views, there will be no impact from the second story as shown in my plan. That's clearly shown. And also, if there is an impacting view, and you believe that reducing the height of the roof to two feet is something that the commission would like to approve this project, then we are open to that. My personal preference, I mean, well, my belief in designing, I design houses for a living. I don't think that will look good. You know, our project, we want our project to look like the best. We do a lot of houses up the hills, and we actually try to have our projects look the best. So if that's something the commission would like, we would be able to do that. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Question, do we have any precedent at this commission level with regard to approving the development of a home that is at or greater than this percentage based upon the lot size?
Well, that to Joanne.
Chair, if I may respond. Not necessarily at this particular area, but most, the majority of applications for a conditional use permit for a large home has been approved by the Planning Commission. The only, in the last year, only one application was continued for redesign to reduce the size of the house to the maximum unit size, to below the conditional use permit level. And that particular house is on a much smaller lot. And also, there was, there was privacy impacts, and it was on a neighborhood that was predominantly single-story.
Was it in the hills, or was it in a flat area?
It was in a flat area.
That's a great question. And in addition to that, I also wanna go to the staff report that the staff has produced. And they provided recommendations to each topic, to the conditional use permit, to the site modification to increase the height, and also to, sorry, I'm trying to read exactly what staff says. The conditional use permit to allow for the larger home, which the development is sensitive and does not determine detrimental or convene to the safety of circulation. It also is a great design, according to staff. That staff reviews all the plans for the city of West Covina. Also, the height, the reason why the height is a, was not a requirement, but we are requesting, is because that it will architecturally blend well with the existing house. And this is something that staff wrote. It's not something that I submitted. And also, because of our, the way our lot is positioned, that we do not believe that the property would affect the neighboring properties nearby, completely adjacent to it. But with that said, this is our second meeting. Just to get to here, has been over a year. We have also, in addition to this, we have worked with Joanne to come up with different iterations of this design. And just to get to this point, has been, has been different changes, different designs. So we believe that this design has incorporated a lot of the city's comments, a lot of the city's desires, and a lot of the city's requirements. And that's why we are here before the commission to get ultimate approval from the Planning Commission. Like I said, we will be, if you, if the Planning Commission believes that reducing the height to twenty-five feet and not allowing this increase in the two feet, if that is something that the Planning Commission believes, we're more than happy to redesign the project again and to try to incorporate that and somehow tie into the house. We feel very confident that we can do that.
Thank you.
How many big, I guess, expanded houses are like that around the surrounding area?
I didn't do a study of how big is the biggest house and how many are this size, but I did notice three houses that I personally looked at from the LA County Assessors that tells you how big the square footage is, what's the lot size. And there was three. There was approximately one over ten thousand three hundred or ten thousand five hundred square feet. There was another house, seven thousand five hundred square feet. There was another one, a little over seven thousand eight hundred square feet, off of just me remembering what I looked at in the neighboring houses, which is in the vicinity of a three-hundred square radius.
And so we, so existing, it's four thousand three hundred forty-four square foot? Then you're gonna expand it to seven thousand four hundred sixty-five square feet, or?
the house is, so the construction, the existing house is three thousand nine hundred and ten, I believe. I don't have my plan. One second. Three thousand nine hundred and ten, approximately. And then the ultimate house, the final, everything would be seven thousand four hundred sixty-five. The total floor area.
So is there any part of the project that you believe that could be reduced somehow? Are you willing to somehow, with the design, reduce some of the aspects of the new proposed area? Because I do understand, obviously, the residents have a deep concern because it is a drastic, big change in development. Is there anything that you believe that if you had more time, that you could possibly reduce some of the size of the project? Just so it's not as huge of a project to what the residents' concerns are on?
When you say huge, do you mean the height, or do you mean the floor area?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, most of the residents' concerns were about the expansion width. Because if I'm not mistaken. Because I understand they said that it was not necessarily the view, it was more about the drastic expansion. And don't get me wrong, that the project's a beautiful project, but just, off your belief, do you think there's a possibility that, maybe there's a possibility that some reduction could be occurring? Unnecessary space or something?
So, Joanne, if I can, I wanna answer your question, but I also wanna be one-hundred percent sure that I'm answering it correctly. So the staff report is stating that the addition, the addition to this project is one thousand eight hundred sixty-eight square feet to the second story and a seven hundred and thirty-four square feet to the first story. That is the project, because I'm not really, I'm not adding the garages or the balcony. Now, my question to Joanne is, is are in total living area, are you adding the garages part of the construction of the project and part of the FAR?
Chair, if I may respond to the applicant's question?
Okay.
Okay. So for the maximum, maximum unit size, the garage is included in that maximum unit size calculation?
So the garage is nine?
Give me one sec. Out of the seven thousand four hundred sixty-five square foot, six thousand five hundred thirteen square foot are livable space.
Correct.
Nine hundred and fifty-two square foot consists of the garage.
Yes.
So they added, they wanted almost eighteen hundred sixty-eight square foot for the top floor. And on the first floor, they wanted seven hundred and thirty-four square foot. That's the livable space that they're asking for. Now, I understand that the garage, due to the fact that there's more than four bedrooms, we needed a three-car garage. So that's by code, they have to have that for us. Well, I mean,
Correct. And we're okay with that.
Okay. So that's half, you know, we have no choice, but we have to have that garage.
Correct.
Now, in terms of the square footage, I understand that in terms of how and where you're building, majority of the square footage and how the houses, and that particular lot is unique, even though it has a lot of land, really, only the top portions are usable. Everything kind of run downhill, fifty feet down there. So I guess the question is, can we put the house somewhere else besides that mass area? Because that area makes it look really huge. Looking at the site plan, I guess you can, you know, go in a little bit and explain this to our planning commission, and then we can go from there. Now, we had two issues here. One of them is the size of the house that we have to, we have to consider. The other, the size of the house, meaning six thousand five hundred thirteen square foot, that's livable space. The other issue we have was the height of the building, which, because they go over and they wanna match the existing house, it's two feet difference. From twenty-five current code to twenty-seven. So we have to keep focused on this, two issues that we have, and how we can make it work from your standpoint. And if you can, I guess we heard, I heard this, you know, a month ago, or two, regarding all the whole projects and where things are layout-wise and what have you, and why you couldn't do certain things. So maybe you can spend a little bit of time explaining where the garage needs to be and all that stuff, and then how you can reduce it if you need to.
Okay. So if we go to the site plan, you know, that's a very good image. So Commissioner Gutierrez, to clarify that, I got very good clarification that the actual house is sixty-five hundred square feet, not the seven thousand four hundred sixty-five, but the city of West Covina includes it as a complete project of everything. So with that said, we would be willing to maybe reduce five hundred square feet from, if the commission is, would like to approve this, or I'm sorry, if the commissioners wish to approve the project, we would be willing to receive maybe a condition of approval stating that this project shall be reduced by, I don't wanna go five hundred, but, I mean, if we could go two fifty, that'd be great. That would be reducing it by two feet, by the whole project, two feet in. We can go two feet in. Or you can give us a number, and with that approval, we can go back with staff. And then with staff, with your comments of reducing the square footage, with my practice in designing houses, and with staff's expertise in reviewing plans, I believe that we can come up with a project in a smaller size. Now, the site plan, the garage, that's almost a thousand square feet. That really cannot be moved anywhere because what we're doing is we're taking advantage of the existing garage, and we're expanding it. The driveway is immediately in the front. If we could move the garage somewhere else, we would, but I don't think there's a possibility there. The second-story addition that is through the right The second-story addition that is through the right and towards the, towards the rear of the property, we'll believe that's really our, that's really what we want. You know, we, we don't wanna get rid of the view, we, we wanna keep that. That is, that is what's driving the project. But if you can condition this project for approval and request that we reduced either 250 square feet of the rear structure, or maybe 200 in the front and 100 in the, I mean, 200 in the back and 100 in the front, or something like that. I can't give you an exact what would work right now, because we need to speak to our client. You know, this is his dream house. To make a decision like that and tell you how we're gonna redesign it is very difficult for me. You have to, you know, this is their dream house, I can't make a decision for them right now. But I believe that if you give me flexibility, that I can redesign something with the property owner, my client, with staff, and with the other designers that we have that produce this architectural plan, we can come up with something, as long as you provide some guidance of, we need to reduce the plan 300 square feet or, or 200 square feet. And I think we, we would be very happy to move forward and build this dream house.
Um, thank you for being very flexible with us. So what I'm gonna do is currently, right now, you're doing your rebuttal. We're gonna, I need to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Um, and then our planning commission can have a discussion in terms of what it is that we would like, um, go from here.
Okay.
So, okay, so, go ahead.
Okay, fast question. Uh, you, you, do you believe that if we were to possibly table this towards the end of the meeting and bring it back towards the end of the meeting tonight, that you'll have time to call up your client and get permission that if you're willing, if, if he's willing to, uh, decrease it by 250 square feet, uh, in the back and 100 square feet in the front?
250 in the back?
I'm just repeating what you said. 250 square feet in the back and 100 square feet in the front.
Yes, we would love that. If you give me 30 minutes, or, or if we continue it to the very end, we can speak to my client, and if he says yes, then I would love to move forward with approval.
Well, before we go on, uh, we do have to close the meeting, and then we have a commission, um, here, uh, discussions. And then after that, we will decide in terms of how about we're gonna approach this, um, decisions, not just on one planning commissioner. So, um, just wait for a second, and then, uh, if you don't have anything to add, if our commissioners do not have anything to add, I'd like to close the meeting right now.
The public hearing?
Yes.
So there's no more comments, right?
Correct, after this. So, I'm gonna close the public hearing meeting right now, and then we're gonna have, um, we're gonna open it up for our commissioner to have a discussions currently.
Thank you.
And then if anything else that we have question about, we just ask Joanne, our staff, or what have you.
And I'm available for any answers too.
It's closed.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, so we're opening up to commission discussions. So now, all the new planning commissions in us, we're gonna have a discussion in terms of how, um, what it is that we're gonna... Regarding this project. Anyway, some, okay, so who would like to go first? You know what, I'll go first. First of all, this project has been for a few months now. It is a unique site, and it is also at a unique location. When I say unique is that this is located in, in, in the South Hill area. If you go no, south, which is up the mountain, there are huge home, um, 10,000, 12,000, 5,000 square foot. We go by the track, hundreds of homes that's out there, that are huge homes, we know that. We all live here. However, if you go a little bit south, north, I'm sorry, I'm getting my direction disoriented. So if you go south, there's a lot of big home. If you go north, the house gets smaller and smaller until it hit the freeway further on. So it's a unique location, and also another thing is that it's unique in a sense that it does have a view, and no matter where you build a house on a hillside, you will see it from every direction. To some extent, you will see it. And, um, right now, we have to have a discussion in terms of how much it will impact our neighbors and also what is considered big, because in this whole, 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 um, tonight's discussion about this house, 6,513 square foot in South Hill area is not unusual, or it's not considered huge, but that area is a borderline. Borderline, if you're going south, it gets bigger. If you're going north, the home tend to get, I'm not saying all the homes is smaller, but in general, in the general areas. So we do need to have an open discussion in terms of what it is, that, um, how much impact and impacts the neighbors, the cities, you know, all of that. So let's have an open discussions, and who would like to go next? Brian?
Okay, great.
Commissioner?
Thank you. I guess this question's for the city attorney, is she still on the phone? Okay, great.
Yes, she is.
So there's the, I guess, um, the main, I guess the general question is, does the city of West Covina have an obligation, when, when a resident or applicant comes to the planning commission, or, or if he was to appeal with a city council, is there an obligation on behalf of the city, uh, to follow the general plan and go by the general plan and, and approve the, uh, the opportu, uh, approve a project? And obviously with the conditional use, conditional, um, revisions to it, it's, is that the city's obligation to look at and approve it based upon the general plan and not by a personal belief or a personal idea, but rather by the general plan and, and make those decisions based upon that general plan?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, um, can, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful, I apologize for, great, I apologize for the earlier delay, we had some technical difficulties. But in answer to the question, um, the, yes, the city has a general plan, which is the foundation of its land use, um, upon which we, we build with our municipal code. And the decision before the commissioners tonight should be based on the findings for the, uh, conditional use permit as, as set forth, um, in your staff report and the resolution. And so those are the findings that you need to focus on in terms of your decision-making, and if you are able to make those findings, then you're able to approve the project. So I hope, I hope that's helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, shall we please?
I have a question for the city attorney. When a conditional use permit in this particular case, to address the size as well as the height, when it is a case that the size is clearly more than 25%, does the city have some other type of an application process?
So the app, the, the process before you is, is the process for approval of large homes that's set forth in the municipal code, and then, and that is the only process?
Okay, so as it is right now, for this particular area, 5,000 square feet would normally be the max. Is that correct?
So I may, and I may ask for, I may ask for Joanne to jump in here, um...
Chair, if I may?
Please join, thank you.
So, for, in, in the city, if, if the lot is over 20,000 square feet, and in this particular case, it's, it is over 20,000 square feet, I believe there's, the threshold is between 20,000 square feet and I believe 25 or 30. Anyway, it's the maximum unit, the maximum unit size is 5,000 square feet. If you go, if you're proposing 25% beyond that, it requires a conditional use permit. But within, within the, um, the, a little bit over, um, over 5,000 square feet and less than 25%, it would be an administrative use permit process. It would, i- if it's under 20,000, 25%, the 25% threshold, then it wouldn't require a planning commission review. It would just be done administratively.
So I guess now my question is, um, has the city currently allowed someone to build a home addition that is more than 50%?
Yes, in the past, yes.
Was that approved under the conditional use permit process?
Yes.
So at that, would it be appropriate then, since you have people from the public who live in the community and have expressed concerns over the size of the addition, particularly on the second floor, that perhaps it would be prudent to allow both parties to have a chance to discuss what would be an acceptable amount or size of house that they, that both parties could agree on?
Commissioners, if, if that, if that is something that, uh, there's consensus on, you know, it's not outside of your, if that's something you feel needs to be done as a commission, you could always continue this item and direct the applicant to conduct further community engagement. But really, when, in terms of your decision-making, uh, you should be focused on the required findings for the conditional use permit that are set forth in your staff report, and see if you are able to make those findings tonight, or if not, then what additional information you need to be able to do so.
Thank you. Does anyone else, go ahead.
I just have one question, there was a, um, a question of safety and whatnot, and after reading the staff report, that it's deemed that there are no safe, safety issues. Is, is that valid?
Yes, the, the project would require, um, if it's approved by the planning commission, it would require building permit plan check, and, and the city's building, um, building, um, division plan checker will review the structural components of the house to make sure that, that is structurally, that the, the way it's designed is structurally safe. Um, and as far as, as far as, um, vehicle or safety is concerned, it is a, a developed street, um, the, the house is existing, and the driveway is existing. So it's not going to impact, have, have any impacts or changes to vehicle or safety.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you. Do you have any?
I, I've, I have one final question regarding, uh, the overall maximum size allowed on the property. In addition to the, the total square footage of the house and, and, and a garage, in the event that a, a property owner who had the option of putting, say, a granny flat or something on, on their property, would they be able to exceed the maximum, uh, building square footage in order to, to accommodate that?
Yes, uh, an accessory dwelling unit is allowed up to 1,200 square feet. And also, a junior accessory dwelling unit, it's allowed up to 500 square feet. And that, that does, the state law does not prevent, or cannot, um, state law states that cities cannot prevent ADUs and junior ADUs from being constructed as long as it complies to the, the laws listed in, in the state code. As far as ADUs are concerned, ADUs do not count towards the floor area, the floor area ratio of the house, and it doesn't count towards lot coverage as well.
So, based upon the topography of the site here, it would be exceedingly difficult for this particular property owner to build an accessory dwelling unit up to 1,200 square feet. Would, is that a fair statement? Or would they be able to?
Um, it depends on how it is, how it wa, it is designed. If, let's say, they, if they go with the existing house and they, they built an AD, and they totally not, they, they forget about doing their addition or add on a smaller, a smaller addition, they still would be able to build the 1,000, the 1,200 square foot ADU and, and 500 square foot junior ADU with a four-foot setback.
So...
Whether or not it's in the second floor or first floor.
Okay, so, just so, just so I'm clear, in the event that we were to approve this, they would still be able to build by right a 12,000, or 1,200 square foot ADU, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, is there any provisions by which we could, we could allow them to build a similarly sized maximum total dwelling? So let's say 5,000 plus 1,200, so you have a 6,200 square foot maximum, uh, building size based upon the topography and, uh, and be in a position to take away the right for them to subsequently come back to us and say, I wanna put a 1,200 square foot accessory dwelling unit on the property?
I would defer that question to the city attorney's office.
Uh, Commissioners, there, uh, we, we cannot in any way restrict, uh, them from building an ADU under state law. Um, an ADU would be, uh, administratively approved anyway, so it, it, it would not be a matter before the planning commission.
Would it be a condition of granting this? If the property owner were to agree to that?
I believe that would be seen... It will. If the property owner were to agree to it, then the property owner agrees to it, whether or not that would be legally enforceable or a violation of state law, I think is questionable.
Hey, does anyone else has, um, would like to add anything? If not, we're gonna, um, close the commission discussions. Do I hear any other?
Okay, in front of me tonight, we are having two issues. One of them is the size of the house that we have to look into, and that's, um, that basically calls for the, um, conditional use permit, because the lot or the square footage exceeded the 25%. Which is, it, it exceeds 25%. If you take, uh, the 5,000 times the 25% is 6,250 square feet. So the size of the house is, is, is large. That's one of the things that we have to, um, have a, basically, um, our commissions have to make, uh, decisions on. The other is the height of the building. We also have to take into considerations that they, due to the fact that the existing house right now is 27 feet, in orders to comply with what the developer, um, wants or the owner wants, it's 27 feet that they were requesting for instead of the standard that we have. And, um, if we're closing the discussions already, we have to keep that into considerations, and we are, I'm gonna ask for a motion. Do we have a motion, one, to approve it, one, to deny it, or two, to continue the discussions based on what it is that we, whether need more information, more time, what it is that we want? So, do we have a motion?
I would like to make a different motion.
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion that we, uh, approve option two, but, uh, yeah, but reduce a square feet by 200 square feet from the back and reduce 100 square feet from the front. So we follow our obligation as, as a, as a city to approve the project in accordance to the law, but also at the same time, put in the voters' voices first, and I think, so my motion is to, uh, approve option two with the reduction of 200 square feet from the back and a hu, a reduction of 100 square feet from the front.
Do I have another motion? Is there a second? If there's no second, is there another motion? Does anyone wanna make a motion?
I motion for approval for the square footage intact, and if it's allowable to be grandfathered to the, to match the existing sub, uh, structure, then, and that it would be allowed.
Do I have a second for the motion? Do I have a second for the motion or another motion? She motions to approve as is, and?
If it is possible to be grandfathered, to be approved for option two.
And basically she wants the heights to be grandfathered in the same height. Do I have another motion?
Chair, hang, just for clarification of the record, is there a second to that motion?
Is there a, there, there, there's not a second. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, will there be another motion? Okay, do I have a second motion for that? Going once.
I would second that motion, however, I, I would want to have direction back to staff to go back to work with the applicant, specifically to, specifically to determine whether or not we are able to, one, have a, have some sort of condition on, on granting this such that our, our statewide land use policies are, are not impacted by, by virtue of us saying, okay, we're, we're going to approve this with a condition that they would agree there's no accessory dwelling unit to be placed on there. And I, and I would also like to investigate, one, the, or, or two, excuse me, the, the applicability of the required expansion of, of the garage and whether or not that will change the overall footprint. I, I understand that's, that's part of the, that's part of the code, but perhaps there's, there's something we can, we can adjust in that. Again, I'm, I'm thinking out loud, so I apologize if I, if I don't sound clear.
Okay, so we have a motions to continue and a motion to, a second motion to continue with?
With, with, with the discussions and the, or, excuse me, with, with the direction to, to staff to go back and work with the applicant to see if, 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 if we can, if we can work to put this project within the confines of, of, of state law with regard to the overall accessory dwelling unit cap. Meaning, I'm, I'm looking at this as, as a commissioner here, saying, I don't want to go over the 6,200 square foot maximum that, that this applicant would otherwise be allowed to have, pretty much as a matter of right. And, and, and that's my, that's my big issue with this.
Thank you.
Helena, can we call, please?
Commissioner Becerra. Aye or nay? Okay. Commissioner Gutierrez.
So which, which motion are we going off? I didn't hear a second. We have her motion and we have, we have this commissioner and that commissioner's motion. So which one are we going off?
She had asked for continuance, commission or commission, and then I'll, the other commissioners, Nick Lewis, had seconded that with additions add-on. So we're gonna continue this.
So that means it will be, it will be her motion and?
So, excuse me?
Do you agree with the add-ons with your motion? So it'll be her motion, but with the?
Commissioner?
Agreeing with, to add to her motion, to add his?
Continue with an add-on.
Yeah.
So, yes.
And I would like to add something to that too, if you guys don't mind, and that would be to bring it back to the next meeting. So we don't wanna, obviously, we don't wanna create a, a burden to the homeowner, but that we bring it back to the next meeting as well.
Okay.
Thank you for those clarifications, Commissioner.
We'll start again. Commissioner Becerra? Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Chair Hung?
Aye.
The motion passes, five-oh.
Thank you.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
The next, the next planning commission meeting is gonna be February 9th. However, if the applicant does have to make revisions to his plans, February, there would not be enough time to do so if the next, since the next meeting is Feb, February 9th. However, as far as the continuation is concerned, staff would like to suggest that item be continued to a date certain of February 23rd, which would allow the applicant and staff more time to, to work together to, to come up with a better project.
Okay, thank you. So February, we continue this to February 23rd?
Since it was already voted on?
Commissioners?
If the owner doesn't mind, what, what the staff is recommending, then?
He's okay with it. He gave us a thumbs up.
Yeah, perfect, so, great.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the record, there, there seems to be consensus from the commission that the date of continuance is to the second meeting in February.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, since the item is continued to a date certain, notification, neighbor notification will not be sent out.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. We're gonna continue to our public hearing. Item number two, precise plan number 20-04, project pursuits to Pacific Plan. Applicant is Charles Chip Riddle II, III of Enament Health. Location is 1115 South Sunset Avenue. Request is implementation of Phase One, expansion of the hospital, including a two-story medical office building, new emergency room and ICU department, and new four-level parking within the 28.78 acre Queen of Valley Hospital, Pacific Plan area. And we're gonna hear from staff reports and who will be doing the report for us? Joanne?
Jo, Joanne, our planning manager, Will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening again, Chair, members of the commission, and members of the public. I'll go ahead and start off with a bit of background or history regarding the Queen of the Valley specific plan and the Queen of the Valley site. The, the first Queen of the Valley specific plan was initially adopted in 1987. This allowed for the construction of the birthing, the birth center, which was constructed in the year 2000. The new, the new specific plan was adopted in November 2019, which allowed for a 490 square, 490,000 square feet of development. Last year in October, the planning commission reviewed a precise plan to allow the development of Sunset Field, which was previously a, a baseball field that was owned by the city, into a parking lot for the, for, for the hospital, to accommodate the hospital use. The, 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 the parking lot was a part of the adopted specific plan and was consistent with, with the specific plan that was adopted in November 2019. The project would, the, the proposed project would be for the Phase One improvements, which is to, to construct a medical office building, a park, in, in a parking structure. This project also involves additions to the ICU building, of the, the hospital building for the ICE, for a new ICU and emergency room department. So I'll go, this is the project site plan. The parking structure is highlighted in green in the site plan, the medical office building in blue, and the emergency room building in, in red. The site for the medical office building is currently developed with Building F and Building G would be, which would be demolished to accommodate the medical office building. Building, Building E is also on, on site near where the proposed medical office building is located, and Building E would be moved on a temporary basis to this area right along here. The relocation of Building E is not part of this project, and they would have to apply for a minor site plan review separately in order for that to happen. There is a condition of approval that states that. Again, Building E is not, the relocation of Building E is not part of the project. At that time, the, the plans were submitted, the plans for the relocation of Building E was not, was not yet ready. The medical office, the medical office building would be set back 162 feet in 11, in 11 inches from the nearest property line to the northeast, which is, which is the property line adjacent to the, the multifamily residential property. In the original specific plan, or in the, in the newly adopted specific plan, it, the, the plan requires a 10, an eight-foot tall wall and a 10-foot wide landscape buffer from, from the, from the Queen of the Valley site to the, to the multifamily residential, residential development to the east. And this, this was specifically asked for by the ownership of the multifamily residential property and is being constructed as part of this project. Medical office building would include, but will not be limited to operating rooms, waiting rooms, nurses' stations, exam rooms, lounges, offices, supply rooms, and so forth. The main entrance would, the main entrance of the medical office building would be, would face northeast, right along here. In the patient, the, the patient drop-off area would be right along here where the driveway is. The entrance would include a total, total of four handicap parking spaces and a total of 22 spaces within an enclosed area on Lot C, surrounded by additional landscaping. The proposed parking structure will be just north of the medical office building, and it would be separated from the, the medical office building by a walkway with, with landscaping. One of the mitigation members, measures in the, in the project EIR when the specific plan was adopted, was to require any structures over 45 feet or three stories in height that were within 100 feet away from the Orange Wood Park soccer field, which is right along here, to require a shade and sta, shadow analysis prior to the issuance of a building permit. The parking structure, it, the parking structure is 116 feet and nine inches away from the soccer field, so no shade and shadow study would be required. The structure, the parking structure is set back 88 feet, 10 inches from the closest property line right along here. The, the first level of the parking structure would have 63 spaces. Levels two and three would include 114 spaces, and levels four would include 100, 107 parking spaces for a total of 398 parking spaces for, provided by the parking structure. Surface parking is provided adjacent to the parking structure. The site for the emergency room building and, uh, emergency room department and ICU building includes an existing building with surface parking, which would be demolished as part of the project to accommodate the new structure. The two-story emergency room buil, emergency and ICU building would be constructed to the southwest of the existing education annex, to the west of the main hospital, and south of Orange Grove Park. Here is the proposed landscaping for the medical office building. The landscape concept for Phase One would include trees, low ornamental grasses, mid-height shrubs, tall shrubs, and screens, ground covers, and a mixture of succulent accents. The, the landscaping is, is proposed predominantly on the perimeter of the medical office building on its side, on the north. And also, there is also gonna be landscaping near the dri, near the driveway aisles and along the property line. Here is the proposed elevations. According to the applicant, the concept behind the design of the proposed structure is to establish a cohesive and contemporary design character for the campus that creates a dynamic relationship between the existing and new buildings. Additionally, the, the design seeks to replace outdated and obsolete, obsolete buildings with, with modern, more modern facilities. The design, the design would comply with green building standards and would maximize energy efficiency. Here is a colored rendering of the medical office building with, with the proposed colors and building material. So the, the, the medical office building will include metal panels and, and colored, colored concrete, and also glass. Here are the elevations for the proposed parking structure. The maximum height for the parking structure, as measured from lowest grade to the highest point, is 45 feet tall. And it would be, it, it would match the metal panels and con, the color of the concrete of the, the medical office building. Here are, here is the proposed landscaping for, for the emergency room and ICU lamp, um, in ICU. The, there would be a total of 38 trees, existing and new, which would be included in the parking lot. The, the landscape concept for, for this particular phase would include, again, trees, ornamental grasses, mid-height shrubs, tall shrubs, screens, ground cover, and so forth. Here is the elevation for the ICE, for the ICU and the medical building. The building is proposed to be two stories and with a height of 40 feet, 44 feet tall.
I'm sorry, Joanne, can you repeat that again?
The, the, um, emergency room and ICU building would be two stories, and it would, it would be 40 feet, 44 feet tall in height, as measured from lowest grade to the highest point. Here are the rendering and also the material and color board for the existing, or for the proposed medical office or emergency room department and ICU, I'm sorry. The, again, it'll, it'll use, it'll use colored concrete similar to the parking, the color of the parking structure and the medical office building. And it also has some features that are similar to the existing hospital building as well. As far as CECL is concerned, on November 5th, 2019, the City Council certified the Queen of the Valley Hospital Specific Plan Program Environmental Impact Report. The council found that the final program EIR was complete and was prepared in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. CECL allows for the preparation of the addendum to a certified EIR to document minor changes in the project characteristics or environmental conditions under which the project will be developed. In this case, an addendum to the program EIR was repaired, and it was found that the specific plan, that the project is consistent with the adopted EIR and with the specific plan. Since the specific plan itself mentioned all the proposed construction on the Queen of the Valley site in phases, and each one of the, of the buildings that are being proposed today are, were described in the specific plan itself. The addendum was prepared by the city's environmental consultant, which is SOMAS. SOMAS is participating virtually through Zoom. So if the planning commission has any questions for SOMAS, they'll be able to assist in answering any environmental-related questions after the staff report. The city has determined that there are no significant environmental impacts resulting from the proposed project and no significant increases in the severity of any previously identified significant environmental impacts, and no new mitigation measures are required. Notice of Public Hearing was sent to 463 owners and occupants within 300 feet from the site. It was published in a newspaper, and it is also posted on the city's website. The Queen of the Valley Hospital Management, which is now currently eminent health, they had, they had conducted several community meetings related to the specific plan prior to this specific plan being adopted. And they have also reached out to the neighbors and conducted community meetings regarding this particular application. With this, staff can make positive findings and recommend that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving Precise Plan Number 20-04 in the EIR addendum with revisions to Paragraph 2 on Page 4 of the resolution. And I'm going to go ahead and read the change to, to this particular section that the staff is proposing. That pursuant to all the evidence presented, both oral and documentary, and further based on the findings above, Precise Plan Number 20-04 is approved subject to the mitigation monitoring and reporting program attached here to as Exhibit A, which incorporates the applicable mitigation measures from the Queen of the Valley Hospital Specific Plan Program Environmental Impact Report. So the mitigation monitoring and reporting program document was provided to the planning commission. And the mitigation program and mitigation monitoring and reporting program at part of, that was part of the original EIR, had certain mitigation measures that are not applicable to this specific project that was applicable to other projects that are identified in the specific plan. So in order to, to not require those mitigation measures that are not applicable, that are in the original EIR, that are not applicable to this project, in order to screen that out, a new mitigation monitoring and reporting program would have to be adopted as well. If the planning commission has any questions, I'm available to answer. And the applicant's team is participating through Zoom as well.
Thank you, Joanne, for the report. And I'm going to open up to, I don't know if our commissioners have any questions for our staff currently?
Before commissioner questions, I would also like to point out that around 5:30, right before the meeting, I received an email from Robert Torres, which I forwarded to the applicant and I also printed out for the planning commission. And I believe he, he was concerned with, or he is requesting that eminent construct a fence near, near the park along the park property line. In addition to this, I also would like to point out that staff did receive an email from, from the ownership of the medical office building on Merced. And that email was made part of the planning commission packet because it was sent to us prior to planning commission packet delivery. And he is concerned with a tree that is, which has tree roots that is breaking up his parking lot. And he would like assistance from eminent to remove that tree that is on eminent's property. With that, I'm open to planning commission questions.
Thank you.
Quick question with regard to both of these email requests. Are they within the scope of the project before us today?
I don't, I don't believe it is. I don't believe there's a nexus between the project and the request from, from the applicant. However, I would, or from the request from the neighboring property owner and also, and also from the resident regarding putting in a fence along the park property. But I would defer that question to the city attorney for clarification.
Also, Joanne, can you point us on the site plan? Which area is the fence that he's requesting for? It seems like it's on the west.
This, this area right here, along here is the park, I believe is the park that he's, he's speaking about. And it would be around this area.
So, okay, so currently, without the fence, anyone can walk from the parks to the parking lot as well?
I believe there's a chain link.
I, I believe there is, there is a fence there. It's just that I believe the letter was saying that people were constantly breaking the fence or, or removing the current blockage that's already there and going on to the park site.
Does the chain lane fence belong to the hospital currently, or?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, if I may, I agree with Joanne's analysis that these are not tied to the property or the application before you. The one is an existing condition of a tree impact. And, and the other is, it appears from the email from the, from the member of the public that appears to be a city fence. But in any event, the email simply asked the applicant to consider or ask us to request that the applicant consider a wrought iron fence. And Joanne has accordingly forwarded that communication to the applicant.
Thank you, city attorney.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a question for, what's it called? Imanti, sorry, I'm not saying it right, Imanti Health. My question is, in the future, if, let's just say, the county or federal government was to garner more funds to one day open up a trauma center here in West Covina, specifically at your hospital, would the current designs and, and aspects of a trauma center meet the requirements if one day the county wanted to come back and award Imanti Health as a trauma center?
The question was referred, is for eminent health. The planning, the chair, I suggest the chair should open the public hearing.
Okay, I'll, so open, we're just opening up the public hearing. Okay, so do we have any?
So for the applicant's team, I believe Chip Riddle and Tony Blakely is on the line. And there are, there are other, there are other individuals speaking in the applicant's team. So they are participating through Zoom.
Okay, we can't see you, so I guess who would like to go first?
I did ask the applicants to unmute themselves, so if they can do that, please.
Go ahead, ask the applicant again.
Hi, sorry. Well, thank you so much, you all, for choosing our community to expand your hospital. I think it's going to create a lot of resources for our community, especially those who need healthcare. But my question is, is that if in the future, one day the county or the federal government was to one day garner more funds for West Covina and want to name your hospital as a trauma center like they did for Pomona, would this design meet any qualifications or meet the minimum requirement for, to operate as a trauma center if one day needed?
This is Chip Riddle, I'm the Chief Support Services Officer at Eminent Health. And the Trauma One Center designation is a very onerous process, which has a number of different elements. Everything from Hilleport to a number of different requirements. So we currently have not got all those elements incorporated into the new ED and ICU. That would have to be something that would have to be taken into consideration at the time of going out for that designation. So there's more than just the building configuration as it stands right now.
Great, thank you so much that answers my question.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker card or anyone on the phone, email?
Excuse me, Chair Hang, we, we have, we should allow the applicant to speak on their application.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. It's very difficult when we don't see anyone here, but there are a lot of people on the computer and on the screen which we don't have. So, thank you, go ahead.
Was there another question we need to answer or we can answer?
For clarification, we just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak on your application before opening up to other comments.
Oh, well, I think obviously this, we've gone to great lengths to look at all the needs of the community to expand our campus to meet the requirements that we see in the future for expanding our emergency room and ICU. We currently are, have an ER that is designed for a capacitance of approximately 40,000 visits. And we are logging last year up to 80,000 ER visits. And we're designing a state-of-the-art ER, ED, and associated ICU for 120,000 visits, which will see us into the future. The medical office building will have a, again, state-of-the-art cancer center and associated surgery, ambulatory surgery center, and the associated, what we call hospital-based physician clinics in that, which are all needed in the community, as well as all the associated parking that we're expanding for the capacitance for these buildings and these services.
Is that, was that it? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Is anyone else will be doing the presentations on their, on behalf, on their behalf? Okay, all right. If that's it, then we're open up for speakers? Anyone who would like to come up to speak for the hospital? Seeing none, we'll move on to the against. He says the card that we have right here. Is anyone on the phone? That's it? Okay, so if that's seeing none, we're going to close. Oh, okay.
I just had one question for the applicant. Obviously, I think we all hope that this pandemic is put behind us as quickly as possible, but given the current situation, I was curious whether or not you all had considered the implications of COVID-19 and its impact on your ability to provide services and whether or not you guys had considered any additions or making any changes to your plans in light of things that you've learned going through this pandemic?
Yes, we have. We've gone back with the architects, most specifically with the ER or the ED ICU design, and really looked at our surge capacitance. And we looked at a number of the systems as far as with the pandemic. We looked at increasing our, what we call negative air rooms for containing any type of the pandemic flu so that we can create what we call negative air to protect the occupants throughout the ER. We looked at how we were going to stage any of the surge capacitance tents. We did have a number of lessons learned with the existing ER and its capacity that we've reincorporated into the design and taken some modifications to the original design to take in consideration lessons learned through this pandemic. So it has been an eye-opener.
Excellent, that was actually my next question with regard to the negative pressure rooms. Just curious, how many of those rooms will be in the, I guess, the ICU and/or the emergency department expansion?
I'm going to have to defer that to Amit, Amit Bagarva, are you on? I know we increased probably another, I would say, another 30%, 40% more of negative air rooms. I can't, unfortunately, I don't have the drawings right in front of me, so I can't count the numbers. But I do know that we did increase. We had specific input from our ER physician director of the ER and the nursing director for that. for that ER. They've been very closely involved and very vocal about the design increases and needs from what we experienced throughout the pandemic over the past eight months.
Just out of curiosity-
And as a footnote-
Sorry, go ahead.
And as a footnote regarding the fence, we are very cognizant of the request by the adjacent owners about the trees encroaching through the fence, and we will address those concerns.
Thank you. And also, out of curiosity, how many ICU rooms do you currently have? And with the increase of 30%, how many additionally approximate that you think that we're increasing?
Well, we have a design for two modules of 12, or an additional 24 ICUs above the ED ICU, ED department. And I've got the architect, I see he's unmuted here, and he can respond to this specific number of added negative pressure rooms. Amit, are you available?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, so Chip, I think what you mentioned earlier, close to 30% is what we target right now. And we are also in the process of working it out with ArchPod in terms of the flexibility and the future if we need to convert more. But yes, we have 24 rooms and close to 30% we're designing for the negative pressure.
So it's about 24 rooms to 34 rooms?
No, sorry, we're adding 24 ICU. So close to one-third of that, we are designing for negative pressure.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? We can't hear.
So we're having around eight rooms, negative pressure, and the total 24 rooms of ICU.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to approve as is and say that-
Hold on one sec.
We're not there yet? Okay.
No, not yet. So we need to open up for, I'm not sure if they answer all of our questions, if they have answered the questions or did, we're gonna open up to public hearing. So we're gonna hear the applicants, which they went already. Then we're gonna hear any speaker cards, whether it's here, on the phone, or email. Do we have any speaker card who would like to come up to speak? This is a fast public hearing. Okay, okay, so if that's-
I can see it.
No cards is here, so we're gonna close public hearing. And we're gonna have, open for commission discussions currently. So anyone wants to go first to have a discussion about this hospital?
I just wanna say that I just can't wait till this becomes a reality and opens to our community. I know our community is in desperate need of having such a resource like this for our community, and it's gonna mean a lot to them. And thank you to the hospital staff and nurses and everyone who works there and the executive team for wanting to do this in our city. It's gonna bring much-needed service to our community, and it's much appreciative on behalf of the people.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone have discussions or questions or?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, hold on. So, hold on one sec. Actually, I have some questions regarding, we'll get to there. We're doing discussions first, and then we're gonna close the meeting, and then we can vote on that. So for now, I have some questions about the hospital and hopefully for the hospital staff. I'm sorry, I don't have the card in front of me, so I'm just like, I'm going blind. Okay, Chip, can you help me answer some questions? On the parking lot, that is to the west of the site plan currently, the green one on the site plan, if it's color green? I don't know if you can see our presentations currently, they can? So the green sections, I understand that it's four-story high, but then past the drainage area, we have a lot of residents that live there on that side. Can, I assume the residents over there can see the parking structure, is that correct? Assumption?
There are some trees in the back of the lot, the very back. I'm sure they probably could look over their fences and maybe see the very top of it. Remember, the hospital is six stories, so they would definitely be able to see the six-story hospital. But this would be approximately one-third that height.
So the parking structure, I mean, the hospital looks like a huge, you know, building with glass, so it's somewhat very pleasant to look at. However, the parking structures for the resident who lives on that side, which is over the drainage, is that LA drain?
I don't know what it's called.
I forgot what it was. It's LA wash, the big wash. I just wanted to know if there are some screening for that parking structures for the residents, because it's quite a big structure that is four-story high. Currently, what the drawing, what you have as a drawing, is that what the resident will be seeing? And is there any rendering that we can see from what's the resident's perspective as well? By the way, the building for the hospital is beautiful. However, I do have some concern about the parking structures from the resident's point of view.
I believe that was addressed when they were doing the specific plan, but I'll let Joanne discuss that further.
Can you pull up the structure for that parking structure, Joanne?
Is that, is this the eleva, did you want the elevation?
Yes, that is the elevation. There is screening, I'm trying to go on Google Maps so that you can see it.
There is currently like a tree lining that kind of screens some of the apartments along the back, while she brings it up. But I don't, along one side, it's very tall trees along the Sunset Parkway, or sorry, Sunset Fields, where those used to be, the ones on the eastern portion, it's a little bit lower, but she'll show you.
I see that also, this will be addressed to Charles Chip or the architect that was earlier speaking. Is there anything that you can do to make that building look a little nicer? I mean, there are some building and parking structures that has planters or wind or something that actually make it looks like not too bulky and massive and car.
There are quite a few trees that will be beyond the parking structure, because there are additional parking spaces from the parking structure to the back of our lot. And there are trees on islands throughout that parking, which will soften that side of the parking structure. We have screening on the Sunset side, and I'm not quite sure if it's on the other side. So those are, you know, we've taken consideration into screening part of the parking structure. You know, we'd have to look from the residence. I know if you look across the wash, and that's probably a good 300 or 400 feet away, those residences, I know there's a fence alongside a lot of those houses. I just don't know what that perspective is from that side. We'd have to look.
I see. I'm just hoping that you can, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, that's all I have.
The trees that I'm seeing currently is very sporadic. Is there any way that you can add more tree with more screening? And I'm not even sure if with the tree, will you be seeing the because I don't have the perspective of how, if you're five feet standing on that side of the house, and how are you gonna look at it with a four-foot story, I mean, a four-story-high building? Because currently, they don't have that, so you don't see anything, and there was a park in the past. So is there any way that you can address the fact that, you know, to soften the parking structure? That's a word that you use.
Sorry, just to clarify, you're asking screening for the apartments adjacent to the property or the ones across the wash?
No, the parking structure itself, the parking structure itself. If you can screen and soften the massive parking structures from the resident's point of view.
Yes, this is Amit. We have some sections that we can definitely share with the city. And because of the distance from the property edge, and as Chip mentioned, there are trees, although they are not streamlined, but because the way they're placed, does screen the parking structure. And although it's four-story, the total height on one side is 35 feet, and the other side it drops down. So if you look at the side angle, there's not much that we need to provide, but we can provide a section. We can even have some landscaping adjacent to the parking structure to further soften that. And we have exploded options, so we can definitely work with Joanne on that.
I'd really like that, to see if you can look into that portion to soften the building structures from where all the residents' perspective. I'm just hooking a point of view from that side. I'm sorry, I don't know if you're speaking, and we're both speaking at the same time. Were you trying to say something, Amit?
No, I think that I've got your point, so we can work on that. And show you the sections also, we can work with Joanne and show the side sections.
Okay, so you can actually, you know, create a perspective view for us to look at as well?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Shelby Williams, do you have a questions for Amit?
The only question I have is, for this particular project, I thought I understood in the addendum of the EIR that there would be daily trip generation traffic of about 2,500 to 3,000? Is that correct?
Aleah from Somas is on the line. She is the city's environmental consultant. She would be able to answer any questions related to the project EIR.
Hello, this is Aleah Hukoki with Somas. Can you possibly repeat your question again?
Yes, I thought I saw in the addendum it indicated for this particular project, phase one, that there would possibly be a generation of additional traffic of 2,500 to 3,000, is that correct?
There was, and one location, there was a comparison between the proposed project trips and the previous project, which was the entire campus. So that trip generation was 3,625 daily trips, which included 291 AM peak hour trips and 356 PM peak hour trips. Now, if you had a chance to look at page 3-119 of the ISMD, the project trip generation, the daily trip is 2,579.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. So you're anticipating approximately over a million trips a year for the new sections of the hospital, for this particular?
If the calculation gives you that number, then that would be the number. But however, as I indicated earlier, it's definitely more than 1,000 trips less per day. And it was actually, the program EIR definitely looked at the worst condition, worst case condition, and based on the reality of what's proposed now, the trips are actually less.
Oh, okay, so you're saying the trips will probably be slightly less because of the sizes of the two new buildings?
Correct, because the sizes are smaller than what was originally proposed. So as a result, trips are less as well.
Thank you. And our Commissioner-
You're welcome.
Yes, one question. Because of the increase in traffic, maybe this is a city staff question, has traffic engineering determined any more streetlights needed for, because we're adding a parking structure? The way cars exit, would that increase the traffic flow there? And is there any improvements we're doing, or the hospital be supporting some of those improvements? When it comes to improvements where streetlights and surrounding that area, or having to install streetlights because of that parking structure and the amount of traffic that will be exiting from, whatever exit there will be exiting from?
I believe that there is public right-of-way improvements that are part of the conditions of approval. I think Joanne can speak a little bit more to that if you have more questions.
Okay, no, that sounds great, thank you.
I actually have another questions for Amit, the architect. If you can help me answer some of the questions along the park area. The hospital take great care to screen on the residential side, which is on the east side of the hospital, with a nice big block wall, so that, you know, create a great screen for that resident on that side, which is the east side. However, one of our residents had a concern regarding the transitions between the park and the hospital. Can you address, because based on the site plan, it's really difficult to see, somewhat really small?
So the current, there's a changing fence, and similar to the earlier discussion for the parking structure, there are existing trees, and there are gonna be trees in the parking between the ED ICU expansion as well as the playground. Similarly to the parking structure, we can provide views for that. And if required, probably that's something Chip will have to address if we need to require and build a new wall. I don't know who owns the existing fence right now, but we can look into that. Chip, I don't know if you want to add to that?
I'm sorry, so the current design- Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's my understanding, I'll have to verify it, but the chain-link fence that's there right now, which is quite tall, I think it's 15 or 20 feet tall, that adjoins our parking lot, our current parking lot, to the soccer field is, you know, is the city's. And most of that, the problem is coming from, you know, the soccer field coming across towards us. We ask, you know, to have that repaired, and we try and main- We ask, you know, to have that repaired and we try and maintain that because we don't want that transfer of traffic, you know, either way. So, um, we'll have to look into that just to see how we can shore up that, uh, security. Does that ans- answer the question? Is that the, the fence we're talking about?
Yes. I have the fence up in the projector. So this is, this is the fence that, this is the soccer field. And then the fence is along the property line.
Okay, thank you. So currently it has, um, does any of our fellow commissioners has any questions?
I'd like to make a motion to.
Hold on. We're gonna, uh, we're, you're in a hurry. Um, okay, so we're gonna close the, um, commission. Um, actually, we're gonna close the, um, commission discussion and. Go ahead. Um, before we close the commission, uh, discussions, I actually like to add something. This is a huge project. We don't have a hospital in West Karuna since the Queen of Valley built in nineteen sixty-something. I believe it's sixty-two or sixty-five, forgot the date exactly. However, it's a huge project. I think it's wonderful that the hospital's coming into our city. It adds, you know, our population is growing, it's aging, and we needed the service, especially during this pandemic. We need more of the service. However, I also, um, just from my perspective, there are so many pages that we have to go through. I mean, I lost count after a thousand-something pages. And I actually, if I may, um, like to request that we make a motion to continue this so that we have more times to go through all that. It's so quick, it's a lot, huge package, even though I got a teeny little disc that is no more than three inches, um, tall. And opening up that file, it was like, whoa, where's the book that was supposed to come with it? But anyway, we got a disc and a lot to go through. So I'd like to see if my fellow commissioners would like to second a motion to continue this. Okay, we're gonna close the sessions and, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve project as is and.
Do I have a second for that? And do I have a motion for another? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay.
I, I, I do have one question for the, uh, for the applicant, just based upon the motion that was presented. Given, given the fact that, uh, or, given the current situation in the world, what is the, uh, what is the timeline by which you would break ground subsequent to approval of this project?
Do you want me to answer that, Chip?
Sure.
So on our, uh, ED ICU, it asks access to go to Ospot, which is state planning office of health planning design to be approved. And that typically takes seven to eight months to approve. The plan is to, to, uh, send that to Ospot at the, at the end of, uh, January. So we wouldn't be breaking ground on the actual, uh, ED ICU until the fall, but we will start to make ready work in, uh, late, late summer. In terms of the, uh, medical office building, we would actually be moving forward with the, uh, to make ready work on that project and actually in, uh, April. And we will be starting, uh, construction on that, on the, uh, parking structure and the MOB as it stands right now in July. So late summer as well.
Understood, thank you.
And, and in the essence of timing, you know, we need to move forward on the ED ICU. We are just so compromised with delivery care to our community with the current, uh, ED capacity. Again, it's twenty-two beds. We need to, we need those fifty-five beds, you know, last year, the year before. Every month we delay right now. It's time, money, and we're just, you know, we're not giving the community the service it needs. Plus, we have our finance, our bonding finance there. We've made commitment to timelines, uh, on that as well. So we're hoping to get this moving along. We've already been delayed, uh, several months so far. And we're in the process of doing a make-ready, uh, as early as next month, uh, to get the, we have everything lined up to get these, this sunset parking lot, uh, moving forward so we can move forward with the MOB and the parking structure. So we are on a critical timeline and we can ill afford any further delays as between the COVID, the pandemic and everything else. And we're ready to move. So we would really like to get as expedited approval as best we could.
Chair Hang, members of the commission, there's a, a, a motion that's been made and there's been a second for clarification. I just wanted to see if the maker of the motion would accept staff's recommendation, um, regarding the change to the language to paragraph two and the resolution to specifically refer to the, um, uh, mitigation and monitoring report.
What page is that on of the, uh, proposed resolution?
Page four.
So Joanne, if, if we can go through that again, um, that might help the commissioners. So it's gonna be page four of the, uh, proposed resolution. And it's number two. And then Joanne, do you have that language again that you can?
Yes, so it would be, um, for two, it would be that pursuant to all of evidence presented, both oral and documentary. And further based on the findings above, precise plan number twenty dash zero four is approved subject to the mitigation, monitoring and reporting program attached here to as exhibit A, which incorporates the applicable mitigation measures from the Queen of the Valley Hospital Specific Plan Program Environmental Impact Report. So what I just read is the proposed change.
Yeah, and that's just a clarification as to the, the specific requirement, uh, environmental requirement subject to the specific plan and the, the EIR. So that's just for clarification of the record.
That's correct. There are certain requirements in the, in the initial program EIR that, that are, that are part of that mitigation measure that would not apply to phase one, for, for this specific phase of the project. So that's just to clarify that, that the, the mitigation measures that are not, that are not applicable, uh, that has been identified in the original program EIR, i- is not, is not going to be required for this cause it's, for this particular project, cause it's not, it's not applicable, an applicable mitigation measure.
Thank you. So we have a motion, um, and then do we have a second? Louis, or do you just need clarifications, Aliyah?
So I, I, I have one more point of clarification for the chair's motion. What's, what specific, uh, questions do you, or what specific areas are, are you seeking clarification on? That would require a continuance?
Um, I'm just saying that the project is a huge project and, um, basically, it's a lot of document that we have to go through. And if we can continue this for one more session, I would really appreciate this. But I do need a motion. So if.
I'm, I'm gonna second Mr. Gutierrez's motion.
Okay, so we have a, uh, motion, uh, one, we have a motion, uh, second motion. Um, Paulina, can you please roll call? Or do we have other motion?
Nope, I think we have that one.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we have a motion by Commissioner Gutierrez and seconded by Commissioner Lewis to approve resolution twenty-one dash six zero six four. Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Williams?
Aye.
And Chair Hang?
Aye.
Motion passes five oh.
This action is final and let's appeal to the city council within ten days. Thank you. Um, we're moving on to item number three, which is conditional use permit number twenty dash fifteen, category exemption. Well, this is the South Hills Animal Hospital. Um, location is fourteen twenty-four South Azusa Avenue. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of veterinarian hospital, South Hills Animal Hospital. The veterinarian hospital will be located with an existing two thousand three hundred and five square foot space. And, I'm sorry, um, staff will be doing the report?
Yes, Maria Machado will do, be presenting the staff report.
Thank you.
This will be our intern, Maria Machado's first planning commission presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, so I have conditional use permit number twenty dash fifteen for South Hills Animal Hospital. To give a little background on the site, the subject site is identified by that red box. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the use of a veterinary hospital within that unit. Uh, this area is zoned as neighborhood commercial. It's located in the South Hills Shopping Center on the corner of South Azusa Avenue and East Roma Drive. The surrounding uses are single-family residential and multifamily residential. The overall lot size is three hundred ninety-three thousand three hundred sixty-six square feet. This is a photo of the existing proposed site. Moving on to the, uh, site plan, the applicant is working with the building division to comply with all required ADA regulations. The ADA parking that is called out on the plans currently reflects how it looks presently. This is their proposed floor plan. Their main entrance is indicated by the red arrow. Their reception and waiting room area is located, is indicated with the green box. They are proposing three exam rooms, indicated in blue, and in yellow is the restroom. The rest of the floor plan contains general veterinary uses, such as our treatment area. The South Hills Animal Hospital is a full-service veterinary hospital that welcomes both emergency and treatment cases as well as pa- pet patients in need of routine care. They will have a maximum of five employees working at any given time. Their business hours will be Monday through Friday, from eight AM to six PM, and Saturday from eight-thirty to one PM, and they will be closed on Sundays. Planning staff does recommend for the planning commission to adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit twenty fifteen. And this does conclude the presentation. I am available for any questions. And I believe the applicant is also here if you have questions for them.
Thank you for the report. And, um, does anyone have any questions, our commissioners? If not, we're gonna open up a public hearing. And again, I do not have a card in front of me, but if we have email, voicemail.
I believe the applicant's here.
Oh, the applicant's here. Okay, thank you. Would you like to come up and? Oh, okay, the applicant is not coming up. So, um, does, do we have a card for opposing this project? Or for this project? Seeing none, we're gonna move along pretty quickly. We're gonna close the public hearing and, um, open for commission discussions. Thank you.
I, I'll, I'll just quickly comment and I don't know, but I would suspect that, uh, that everyone is aware that this hospital has been there since nineteen eighty-two. Based upon what I've seen, it doesn't, I don't really see any, uh, overarching concerns that I would have that, that would compel me to, to be inclined to deny this. So I, I would, uh, I, I, I would certainly be in favor of approving this. Seems like they just need a larger site. I have no problem with that. There's no more discussion, I'll, I'll go ahead and motion to approve.
I just wanna say, uh, congratulations on expanding your business. And I think, uh, it's, it's remarkable to see your business grow like that. And I, as, uh, like Mr. Commissioner Lewis stated, I know you guys have been around a long time and, uh, I've seen you guys for, for, I mean, I've seen you guys, uh, there for a long time. And for you guys to grow like that is remarkable. And hopefully you continue to grow and one day be a twenty-four-hour center, so, but congratulations.
Um, okay, so we're gonna close the commission discussions. Feels like we don't have any other questions or anything that we'd like to add. And we're gonna close it. And we already have a motion from Commissioner Lewis. Do we have a second here? Do we have a second motion to approve? Uh, we got a second from, um, Livier Becerra. So, um, Paulina, can you please roll call?
And we have a motion by Commissioner Lewis and a second by Commissioner Becerra to approve resolution twenty-one dash six zero two five. Commissioner Becerra? Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Uh, Chair Hang?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes five oh.
This action is final and let's appeal to the city council within ten days. And congratulations. Now we're moving on to non-hearing items. We have, oh wait, we have number, number four?
Staff report, yes.
Which is a subcommittee for design review, number twenty dash two four, category exemption. The applicant is Eleanor Reyes, visitor for South Lark Allen Avenue. The applicant is proposing to convert an unpermitted patio cover into a three hundred and seventy-five square foot family room addition located on the northwest side of an existing single-story. And, um, who will be doing the report? Joanne?
Joanne.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Since this is not a non-hearing item, there is, there is no PowerPoint presentation associated with this project. I just wanted to point out that this particular project, um, of, of this caliber normally would not require a planning commission, a planning commission public, public hearing or review by the planning commission itself. This project requires subcommittee for design review, which is typically reviewed by two planning commission members on an adjourned subcommittee for design review meeting. This project was initially reviewed by the design review subcommittee on July fourteenth, twenty twenty. And at that time, the design commi- design review subcommittee members, which was both what's composed of at the time of, um, Commissioner Redholt and Commissioner Hakes. And they, they, they unanimously voted to require the applicant, um, to number one, to lower the roof of the addition to match the height of the existing house. The, and number two, to remove the existing con- um, concrete masonry wall right adjacent to the, the wall of the addition, which would be in front of the, the house. And also to. However, at that ti- at that time during the design commission meeting, the applicant requ- um, thought that it would be a financial hardship to comply with, with lowering the height of the, the roof of the addition. Um, so he, um, she requested to be forwarded to the planning commission. However, since then, the applicant has explored the, the possibility of complying with this recommend, or this direction by the subcommittee. However, she, Ms. Reyes, which is the applicant, stated that she looked into it and it would be, um, quite a financial burden that would, that would cause her to not, to not go through with the project if she had to lower it because of financing, financing issues. The applicant did make changes to the plans to attempt to improve the design of the house. She, the applicant is willing to remove the concrete ma- masonry wall in front so that the addition appears more of a part of the, the house and the, the front, the front of the house would appear more inviting. appears more of a part of the house, and the front of the house would appear more inviting. She included a window along the front elevation in the design. However, the roof of the addition still remains higher than the existing house. If the planning, if the planning commission has any questions, staff is available to answer. The applicant is participating through Zoom.
I'm sorry, Joanne, do you have a picture of the staff of the house itself that you can put up on the screen?
Looking at this street view, this is the existing house. This is the patio in question that they would like to enclose, and this is the CMU wall that the subcommittee requested that they remove.
Can you put that up again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I already have a little bit.
Thank you. Okay, the staff, commission, commission has any questions for our staff? If not, I'm gonna request public comments. Is anyone for, for the project or against the project? On the phone, email? Do we get any email? Okay, no cards, no one's on the phone, no one's had emails, so I'm gonna close public comments, and we're gonna open up for commission discussions.
Or on Zoom.
Or, oh, the applicants, the applicants on Zoom, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, so let's hear what the applicant has to say.
Ms. Reyes?
Oh, hi there, I'm Mrs. Reyes, and so we were, would like to enclose our patio and keep our existing roof, and we did agree to make all of the suggested changes that were provided by the planning division. We agreed that adding the exterior wood trim or siding to enhance the curb appeal of the home and run that wood siding along the entire front face of the house that faces Lark Ellen Street. And that alone is gonna add on, you know, additional cost for me, but we're willing to do that if we can maintain the height of the patio, because if I have to tear that down, then I have to have it demolitioned and all of that material repurchased and rebuilt from scratch. I just can't swing that financially, would just be a huge cost for me. And this is, we're talking about a foot, about a foot above my, the main house. That's the difference in the height of the roof.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so.
I'm just asking that you guys consider, we've been waiting for nearly a year, and we've had three different inspectors here for different reasons that had come in, and each one of them had expressed their opinion on the structure as it is, and none of them had a problem with it. And these inspectors were provided or had come based on behalf of the city. So I'm just asking you guys to, you know, please use your best judgment and really just help us get through this.
Thank you for that, and hopefully tonight will resolve some of the questions and issues that you have. And again, back, is there, I'm sorry.
Was there anything else, Ms. Reyes?
No, no, I just, I'm just hoping to get an okay so that we can proceed. We've been sitting with this partial constructed for nearly a year and hoping, hoping that we can find a way to get an approval so that we can get permitted and move on.
Okay, thank you for that. And since earlier we jumped to the conclusions that we don't have any applicants or any speakers, we still don't, so since we don't have any speakers, is there anything that you'd like to add? Eleanor Reyes?
Well, I would just like everyone to know that this, I have lived in this home for nineteen years. I've raised my children here, and when we went to the subcommittee originally with the commissioners, it was their opinion that the home, you know, their opinion that, I think his exact words were an eyesore, and I was very offended because I do take pride in my home, and I don't think it's an eyesore. There's plenty of homes, older homes in West Covina and as old as my home that truly are eyesores, but we live on a main street and on a corner, and we take that into consideration. And we live a half a mile from the high school, and the high school is pouring millions and millions of dollars into the development and the management of it, and we want to be part of it, we are part of this community. So it, we are part of the structure here in this community. My children went to school here, they went to Catholic school, and then the public school, and my husband and I are one hundred percent involved in the booster clubs and, you know, raising money for the organization, for the basketball organizations that they play and hockey, roller hockey at the hockey rink. So we are very much part of this community and just are looking for the community to be part of this decision as well with us, and to look upon it positively.
Thank you for that, and I apologize if any of our commissioners behave or make a statement saying that's an eyesore. I thought it's very cute with all the picket fence, and we will try our best tonight to help you out here. So again, if we don't have any, you're welcome. So we don't have any public comments right now, so we're gonna close public comments, and we're gonna open for commission discussions. So Joanne, let me understand this. So this particular house is a thousand fifty-eight or something square feet? And the existing house, and the existing patio that was built but not permitted was under four thousand square foot? And that's, the four thousand square foot is what we're talking about currently? I'm sorry, not four thousand, four hun, under, three seventy-five, I'm sorry, we're talking about big project, big houses, and I'm still stuck in the thousands. So, we're back to the hundreds now. So the house itself, the existing house right now is one thousand fifty-eight square feet. And our existing patio that was not permitted at the time, you know, nineteen years ago or so, is three hundred and seventy-five square foot. And that three hundred and seventy-five square foot is what we're talking about right now. It so happened to be built maybe a foot or two foot higher than the existing building currently. And to tell you the truth though, when I drove by, the houses over there, it's really, it seems really short, and the roof pitch is really low as well, so you can't really put a central air in there. So as you drive by the neighborhood, I do see a lot of big central air that is on top of the roof with the ducking and everything outside. So, by the way, it's not on your house. I didn't see that. But despite all that, I also see that it's quite a big lot. However, the house is situated in a quite unique centrally located lot as well. So you waste a lot of land to the left and to the right, which is on your side yard, so not a whole lot of places to go. However, if you want to add at that sections, I honestly, I don't see anything wrong with it, and the house itself, it's quite small, and if this helps out, I'm more than happy to help out. So that's just the only thing that I have to add, and if any of my fellow commissioners would like to pitch in?
I have a couple of comments. I did notice that it appears you have what would be considered a reverse corner lot, that you have neighbors leading from Lark Ellen, and then there's another street that crosses. And I noticed that where the patio was located, it is highly visible. And I have to admit, in seeing the other houses in the neighborhood and so forth, I did not see additions of that nature. And in looking at the handout that the city was going by when it came to residential additions, they are held to a higher standard than a patio cover. And I admit, I am disappointed that your contractor did not discuss that with you. Because yeah, ordinarily, when someone is doing an addition, it is normally expected that the house, the main house, would determine the actual height or the highest point, or at least any other addition should match that height. And I see that that's not being accomplished. And actually, based on the plans that were given, the existing house is twelve feet in height, and the area that's being added is fourteen feet. And I do understand that you're calling out that the addition's gonna have a vaulted ceiling. However, from an architectural standpoint, it clearly looks like, right, there had been a separate structure, and now you would like to leave the original roof of the patio and continue the connection to the house. Again, that, the concern that I see there is, again, as an addition, I would hope that you would be able to understand that for value as well as for appearance, for just the common harmony in the neighborhood, that you can understand why we would be a little concerned.
Okay.
I do, I do understand your concern.
Oh, hold on, we closed the public hearing already? I'm sorry. We're into the commission's discussion. So Brian Gutierrez, Commissioner Brian Gutierrez is gonna.
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you, Ms. Reyes, for all the community involvement you do in our community, and if anyone made you feel like that, I'm sorry on behalf of the city, but do know that we're grateful for all the community service that you do and everything you told us today. And I understand that you're coming to the planning commission because of the burden it'll cost you to take that down, and because of the struggles and because of even the economy right now and the struggles that our city, state, and nation are going through, I'll be proud to support the motion to proceed, but later on, when that process starts.
Okay, do we have any other commissioners, or who likes to add? Okay, if not, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry, I'm gonna close the commission discussion, so we're gonna, we have a motion to approve this project, and I believe, do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Libir Basera. Paulina, can you please roll call, please?
Yes, we have a motion by Commissioner Gutierrez and a second by Commissioner Basera to approve subcommittee for design review twenty dash twenty-four. Commissioner Basera? Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Chair Hang?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes three to two.
This action is final and let's appeal to the city council within ten days. That concludes our hearing items, so we are moving on to commission report and comments. Commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. Paulina, the staff have a recommendation on, actually, Paulina?
Yes.
Go ahead.
On your agenda this evening, we do have the election for the vice chair. We, our staff is recommending we continue this item of the election for the next regular meeting, which we, looks like would be February twenty-third.
Okay, all righty. And as, as chairperson, I will appoint two members of the commission to the subcommittee for design review.
I think I need, sorry, I need a consensus to make sure that we can continue it to the next.
We continue this until the next meeting?
Objection.
Objection, we have a motion, okay? And we have a motion from Shelby Williams?
Yes, motion to continue the item.
Okay, so we have a first and we have a second? Roll call, please. Or do we?
We just need a consensus, so we don't need to do a roll call.
And I consent to that as well, so, okay. Then we're moving on as to design review. So we do need to pick up two volunteers as planning commissioners to be on our design committee, just like the one prior to this one. And since all the planning commissions are new, what I'd like to make a suggestion is, I'm not sure if that's how we can approach it, but normally we need two planning commissioners. We normally put someone that's been here before versus, and then someone new. But since all four of you are new, what I'd like to suggest is that perhaps we get all beyond the design committee, and then we pick one and we rotate every other, every other meeting, we have a new commissioners on until like one or two time, and then until you get used to it, and then we pick new, two new commissioners to be on the design review. Does, is everyone okay with that?
Chair Hang?
I'm sorry.
I don't believe, Chair Hang, I don't believe the code allows for that. We need a, we need two members to be designated, to be appointed by you to the design review subcommittee, and in fact, I think rotation could create some issues if matters come before the planning commission, and there might be potential Brown Act implications.
Okay, thank you for that. So we're just, does anyone wanna be on the planning commission? I have Brian Gutierrez and Nick Lewis. Okay, so we have two on the planning subcommittee meeting. Thank you, guys.
And then Chair Hang, you can pick an alternate as well.
Oh, who would like to be an alternate?
Would like to be an alternate?
Wonderful, thank you Shelby. Okay.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
For clarification, although there is, there is not a planning commission meeting due to lack of item on February ninth, there is still going to be a subcommittee meeting because we do have items for the, for the planning, planning commission, design review subcommittee.
Got you, okay, thank you. And then we have, moving on to community development director's report, Paulina will present.
They, so the, they agreed to leave the height of the roof, which was my main concern.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was muted.
We can hear you, but I think the, the two may not be able to hear you.
Once again, welcome. We look forward to working with you, our new commissioners, and continuing to work with our Chair Hang. Our city council actions. Our city council actions, this is where we would let you know of items that were approved by the planning commission and forwarded on to the city council. We don't have any items this evening to report on.
Oops, since there is no further business to consider, this meeting is adjourned at 10:32. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, everyone, for coming.